Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being with us today, tonight, rather. February 9th, 2015, beautiful day. As we begin our meeting, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And as we begin a meeting, we'll have council prayer. And then we'll have invocation. And that's, and pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I debated on whether I should start the meeting with this tonight, but my spirit tells me that I should. And in, for those of you who don't know how this starts, the mayor always calls one of us on city council and asks us if we would do the prayer. And so, someone agrees. I don't think no one's ever turned him down for praying. And tonight is my night. But tonight, I'd like to address Mark, the 12th chapter, the 30th to 31st verses, which cites the two greatest commandments, is to love the Lord our God with all our hearts, with all our soul, with all our minds, and with all our strength, but to love our neighbors as ourselves. Let us pause to say thanks to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Father in heaven, we pause to say how much we love you and to give thanks to you for grace and mercy and your many blessings. You continue to provide us reasonable portions of health and strength to serve mankind. And we thank you for protecting our families, this community, and this country from harm and danger every day. God, we know that we don't always say and do the right things, but we know that you are a forgiving God. And we ask for your forgiveness of our sins, of omission and commission. Lord, the issues we discuss are not always easy. And we don't always make decisions that everyone is pleased with. But Father, we pray for wisdom and guidance in all that we do, realizing that without it, the chances of success in anything we do is minimal. Continue to guide our thoughts and hearts so that we might work in unity. And we promise, as Mark 12th chapter, 31st verse state, that is to love our neighbor as ourselves. We will always give all the praise and glory to you as we pray this prayer in your name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Let me say, as we go through our agenda, certainly you may speak on any of the issues on our agenda. And if you will, there's, we're glad to have so many people here. But if you could try to hold it maybe to just two or three minutes, that would be good, I think. Because I have a feeling a lot of people will want to speak tonight. And so that would allow us to move, move on. Counsel, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda this evening? Necessary. Okay, let's see, no. First item of business then would be the minutes. Consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 26th and the special meeting of January 29th, 2015. Do we have a motion in the second for approval?
I move approval, Mr. Mayor.
By second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, show hands, please. All in, passage unanimously. Under whole business, discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Mayor and counsel, we have a number of appointments that need to be made. There are none on the agenda to approve. But if you have some that you'd like to make this time, that would be great.
Okay, do we have, do we have any nominations for our next meeting? I have one. David Foth, of the Energy and Environmental Committee. I'd like to nominate him. And so that will be on our agenda. It's reappointment next meeting. Reappointment. Yes, sir. Okay. Item two is the second reading in public hearing of an ordinance to rezone 5.78 acres on Gilbert Street southeast and Banks Mill Road from RSS to RS-15 residential, single-family.
Yes, sir. I'm going to read this ordinance by its title. And this ordinance, like the one that's coming up right afterwards, are both the same, but two different neighborhoods. It's an ordinance to rezon certain property located at Gilbert Street southeast from residential, single-family stable, RSS, to residential, single-family, RS-15. Through an addition that was being made on a house on Formata Place, we found out that this street and Gilbert Street were both zoned residential, single-family stables. With that, there are a number of restrictions as far as setbacks are concerned and other items that one would have to follow to build on these properties or add additions. It really didn't fit the character of that neighborhood. And so, we have posted and would like counsel's consideration tonight in second reading to approve the rezoning of 14 lots on Gilbert Street and Banks Mill Road from RSS, single-family stable, to RS-15 residential, single-family.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in the second for approval?
I move, Mr. Mayor.
Second, Mr. President.
Second. Okay, any discussion? If not, show hands, please. All in favor. This unanimously. Okay, item three, second reading in public hearing of an ordinance to rezon properties at Formata Place from RSS to RS-15 residential, single-family. Mr. LeDuke, please.
Again, this is just like the Gilbert Street. And you approved this at the last meeting on January 26th for first reading. This is the second reading of an ordinance to rezon 10 lots on Formata Place from RSS, single-family stable, to RS-15 residential, single-family.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion in the second for approval?
I so hope.
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
I just want to make a quick note. I want to thank our planning department and Tommy Paradise and Susan French for identifying this problem and for their work in helping that one homeowner that was doing the addition. But they did, they did a good job bringing this to our attention. And I'm grateful to them for it.
Thank you. There we go. Show of hands, please, for approval of that. Okay, passage unanimously.
Reggie didn't.
Reggie.
Oh.
Okay, now it's unanimous. Item four, recommendation for bicycle lanes on Hayne Avenue. Mr. LeDuke.
Yes, sir. This is, we had a standalone meeting on this after it came up at our September meeting. As everyone well knows, we had a stripe placed on the north side of Hayne Avenue back in May. And then in, I believe it was August, the second stripe went on the other side of the road, designating no parking and that that lane would be used exclusively for biking. This came before council in September. You asked for further information. Again, we had the standalone meeting to discuss this. A lot of comments we received. We asked Paige Tiffany, who is our staff attorney, to look into this further with the FHWA, SCDOT. FHWA is the Federal Highway Administration. And the South Carolina Department of Transportation, that's SCDOT. On, is there some experimental fashion that we can look at this? Or what recommendations they have? She took a trip up to Greenville last week, met with their attorney, met with their traffic engineers, met with their public safety department, met with SCDOT. And we feel like we have all the information that we could possibly gather at this point. We have several different options that are within your agenda for you to consider. But I think it's best to have Paige come up here so she could go ahead and go through this. She will be showing you a number of slides as to what these options would look like. And then it's back in council's hands. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. LeDuke. I'm Mr. Mayor, council members, citizens of Aiken. I'm glad to be back and try and help it. To present some options that I hope can present a compromise and that maybe council will have the opportunity to make everyone happy. That's what we can all. In no particular order, after speaking with some of the experts in Greenville that I did meet with and gathering as much information in a short period of time that I could, I have to give a caveat that I'm not an expert in traffic engineering and that, you know, the best thing we could probably do if we had all the time and all the money in the world is, you know, grab one down here and maybe dissect Hayne Avenue. But short of that, there's some obvious options that city has. And I have never used this before. First of all, obviously, one of the options is to remove the bike lanes and bicycle markings installed on Hayne Avenue and revert to the prior status. And this is, these recommendations are, options are in no particular order. I would not recommend that one in particular because once the bike lanes are down, to take them out would present some liability to the city to, that the lane, the lane is no longer protected. It's just something to think about. There's pros and cons there. If we take the lanes out, we can install a share road sign and markings all up along Hayne Avenue. We already have it on one side. We can do it on the other. And that is some protection for bicyclists. It gives the motorists information that bicycles will be using the road. That is an option. Number two, we can remove the bicycle markings only and leave the white lines along Hayne Avenue. The benefit to that is that the, obviously, the lanes are put down with thermoplast. And to take them up, we've already heard, if you have to grind them up, they'll leave scars in the road or even the hydro blasting, I think, will leave some scarring. And so if we can leave the white line there and accommodate everybody's needs, I think that would be, you know, best served for everybody. If we leave, take the, just the bicycle markings up and leave the white line, it would just be a wide shoulder at that point. And it could be used for multi-purposes. It could be used for yard debris. It could be used for biking. It could be used, you know, for parking. It's not quite wide enough to park in. I think at that point, the vehicle would be a little over into the travel lane, which presents an issue. If we went that way of keeping the bicycle, or taking up the markings and keeping it as a wide shoulder, I would suggest adding the buffer to the side so it doesn't go into the travel lane. Or using the safety cones. This is an example of a buffer on a bike lane. It doesn't have to be quite that, that design. It can just be another line. But that's one. Another option for that, if you use it just as an accessory lane, taking up the bicycle markings, you can also put up a share road sign. Now, the South Carolina Department of Transportation engineer that I spoke with was a little concerned about that. He was worried that the bicyclists at that point wouldn't know where to ride their bike, whether to ride in the accessory lane or in the road. Because a share road would technically would tell them they need to share the road. And they wouldn't feel free to ride in the accessory lane. That was just his off-the-cuff opinion on that. That's when I was thinking that if we installed the buffer on outside of the, of the accessory lane now and then put a bicycle lane next to it, the bicycle lanes would have a protected place to ride. Ninety percent of the time, the accessory lane is going to be open anyway. They can use that. But if there's parking, it won't come over into the bike lane. Now, it is true that traditionally, if you're going to have parking on the side of a street, you should have more space than what we have. And I don't know why the Greenville's graphic, can we pull that up? But it's in, it's in your agenda. If you look at that, that is a graphic from Greenville's North Main Road Diet. And you'll see, what you're saying there is that there's not enough room for traditional, high-volume parking. So they have what's called, and this is where I got the name, accessory lane. And when neighbors use that lane, then you just put out safety cones to indicate to the bikers that they're going to be parking there. And then, in that way, it is a shared use. So they have the accessory lane, which is anywhere from two feet to six feet. In our situation, it's five feet. Then the bicycle lane. And then when it's being used by the neighbors on occasion, like I believe what's going to happen in Hayne Avenue, that they would put the safety cones out there to indicate that they are going to be parking there. And these are the safety cones that I had just looked at. You can put signs on top that says, "Bicycle Lane Closed." Let me know.
Swap it up.
Sign again.
Just bear with her, she can swap.
Oh, you're interested? If you see the, here, there's, there's cones and a sign. And you could do just signs, special signs. I think Tom Lex was going to recommend that we have signs put out, "Bicycle Lane Closed," temporarily, you know, "Temporarily Parking Permitting." And that would give the motorists notification that the bicycles may be coming into the travel lane. And it would give the bicyclists notification that they need to make sure that oncoming traffic or traffic they're coming into is, is safe. So, and that's what DOT was most concerned about, was safety and notification that everybody understands where they're supposed to be, which is the reason for bicycle lanes and, and signs. Obviously, we can keep the bike lanes on Hayne as they're currently installed while you prohibit parking altogether. You can allow parking with Aiken Department of Public Safety permission. Or what they do, supposedly, I heard a tale from the traffic engineer up there that some of the residents on North Main actually have their own cones and have been trained by Public Safety to install them properly. And when they have parking, they install them in a manner which is appropriate to warn traffic and bicyclists that they're parking there. And that's the way they use that. And the reason I was recommending 2C is because Hayne, even though at this widest section is wide enough to accommodate parking in a bike lane and travel lanes, most of the way, it's not quite wide enough. And so, this accessory parking type idea for parking that only occurs a very little bit of the time will allow parking, you know, on Hayne Avenue and the bike lane. The easiest, least expensive option is obviously to keep the bike lane and have, allow residents to use the cones or signs when they park there. That's one that, the parking's accommodated legally. Biking, and they still have their bike lane close to the curb where they want it. It's not moved closer to the traffic lane. You know, and they have some concerns about that. And I understand that. It's a little bit closer. When the lanes get smaller on Hayne Avenue, when we, if we installed 2C, it would necessitate that the cars slow down a little bit. And that's just a natural function of tightening lanes is that cars do slow down. And so it's kind of what they call a traffic calming effect. So, and then the last one, obviously, is to, you know, kind of take a status quo right now. Allow parking, maybe some cones, or prohibit it as you see fit. And hire a firm like Alta Company out of Greenville, who does this all the time. And they can take the special, unique needs of Hayne Avenue and say, okay, obviously, here is not appropriate for an accessory lane. There's, there's too many cars per day. It's 7,700 cars per day, which was very similar to Greenville's North Main. I think theirs was only 8,000 cars a day, which I, which is the reason I thought it was appropriate. And their parking was intermittent. But this is the type of thing, I mean, people honestly, I mean, they, their careers are made on it. They could look at Hayne Avenue and say, this is exactly what we need to do. And it may be that, that's the type of thing we could do with the cooperation of the bicycle community and DOT and members of the city staff to try and figure out exactly what kind of mix would work on Hayne Avenue to meet everyone's needs. I really would hate to, you know, recommend something to y'all that would pick one side over the other. I think when Hayne Avenue is wide enough to accommodate everyone's needs, if we get a little bit creative. And I wish I, you know, could give you a definitive on each, answer on each point. But if you'll see, Hayne Avenue, it starts out at 38 feet at Greenville. And it widens to 50 feet at Waterloo. And it goes way down to 30 feet towards Linden. So it's not really one solution can, can be, you know, is the answer for every point on Hayne Avenue. But from Greenville to Waterloo, there's no reason why we can't have some parking, some bicycle lanes, and a sufficient travel lanes. So I welcome any questions.
Paige, can you, or do you have any idea how much it would cost to bring in a design company to do this?
Generally, they work by the hour unless we want to contract them for an entire project. And the answer is, you know, do they need to draw the specs? Do they need to come to 20, you know, community meetings? And, you know, how much time is involved in it? But I think generally, you know, they're about $100 an hour. So, I mean, if we, you know, kept it, I think we could do it pretty inexpensively if we, you know, keep the scope of work to a specific area and do a lot of the, a lot of the work ourselves.
Paige, I have a couple of questions for you. First, in reference to the option that you listed as 3B, to allow parking with Aiken Public Safety permit, I thought we previously determined that, that we couldn't make any special exceptions as far as parking in a bike lane because state law wouldn't allow us to do that. Would this, is there something different about this?
Well, when I presented, I guess it was last month, I did indicate that it was legal to close an entire street with a parade permit. So if you follow that logic, obviously, it's legal to close a bike lane temporarily through Aiken Public Safety with a permit.
Oh, so that's not just putting a permit in the single car to park? You're talking, okay, okay, all right.
And that's, and the reason for that is as long as safety concerns are considered and the motorists and the bicyclists know what's coming up, then that's, that's okay. Now, other cities have done such things as permitted parking dawn to duck, dusted on, and things of that nature. But when I went to Greenville and I said, where are you parking in bike lanes? And it was just in, in front of the churches on Sunday from 7:00 to 2:00. And I said, well, that won't really work for Hayne Avenue. I think there's intermittent parking. It's not something that just happens at, all at one time. So I don't think that'll work for us. And that's when we discussed the accessory lane and the, and the safety cones, that the neighborhood of North Main and the bicyclists and motorists cooperate knowing they have to share some of that space and behave accordingly. Whether that'll, whether or not that'll work for Hayne, you know, is, you know, something that we all need to consider.
Well, let me ask you about one of the other ones on here. And of course, I know about the 2C. But on 2A, you suggest taking out the bike symbol markings and keeping the white line. And then that would just be called a wide shoulder for mixed use. Does that mean the cars can then park with unmolested?
Sure.
Would it be legal, they aren't illegally parked?
The only concern I would have is that the accessory, or the accessory and the wide shoulder isn't quite wide enough for the entire car. So their two tires would be in the lane of travel.
Well, they're there now anyway.
Right.
They're in the lane now anyway.
Right. This is true. But when there's a white line on the side, it kind of indicates to a motorist that you can go all the way to the white line. And so I would suggest, if you're going to do that, to put the buffer line in.
I understand. But, you know, I've been, throughout this, I've been hung up on the, the legal ramifications and the, and the liability ramifications. And so if, if you do have either 2A or 2C, then you wouldn't be, it wouldn't meet the legal definition of a bicycle lane and you wouldn't trigger those, those absolute liabilities that a designated bicycle lane would trigger. Is that fair to say?
Well, there's liabilities with having a bicycle lane. And there's also liabilities with not having a bicycle lane. And so, I mean, you have to kind of balance those.
Right. But we're used to the ones without having a bicycle lane.
Right.
We get that everywhere.
We get that.
Yeah.
So you may park, obviously, if it's just the side of the road, you can park there. But the DOT engineer I spoke with was concerned that if there's a white line there and you have share the road, that the bicyclists might be confused about where they're supposed to be because share the road means you're supposed to be in the road. And if we have that accessory lane that's for mixed use.
But the way I'm understanding 2A, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to be dumb.
No, if I'm not explaining it well.
Well, yeah, I may be hard-headed. The way I'm understanding 2A is essentially we take out the, the bike symbol and that lane remains as it is. Bikes can travel in that lane. And as, if a car is in that lane parked or if yard debris or something else is in that lane, the bike can leave that lane of travel and pass the car and come back into it.
Sure, absolutely. They would have all the rights of the accessory lane and the regular roadway.
Okay. And, and so there would be no burden placed on a property owner to go out and have to put cones out either. So you'd have essentially a bike lane without a cone requirement. But you don't have the legal and the liability, the new liability problems and the new legal problems that we would have if we leave the bike, the bike symbol markings in that lane.
That's right. That you lose the bike lane.
Okay. All right. That's my question.
Paige, if you, can you talk about 2C again? Do you have a picture of that up there, what that looks like?
This is a graphic, I think I got out of the Lower Savannah Council on government's bicycle booklet. And if you can see here, it has, you know, full parking lane towards the curb, a buffer, and then a bike lane. Now, what I was suggesting on Hayne would be a little, would be a little different than this in that the bike lane is only five feet. So it would come about to the headlight of the vehicle. And then the buffer would go a little bit further so at least the tires weren't in the road. This is not the Federal Highway Association recommendation to have it that thin. It'd be a situation where there's temporary parking. It's not high turnover. It's, you know, there's a situation where we're kind of sharing some space. We're kind of pushing the envelope on that scenario. But that's approximately what it would look like. And here's another one in New York City.
How about the trash, excuse me, trash pickup and those kind of things? Where, how is that going to work into any of these with the, with the bike lane as it is or one of these other alternatives?
Well, it all depends how we're working it. Obviously, if we leave it as, we just use it as a wide shoulder, mixed use, anybody can park there, anybody can put yard debris there, anybody can bike there. If we leave it as a bicycle lane, I think if yard debris goes in there, the same, you know, rule would apply that you need to notify bicyclists and motorists that you're blocking the bike lane. And so that they can take the safety precautions. I don't think it would, just because it's a bike lane, I think you can still legally block it as long as safety precautions are taken. Kind of softened my stance a little bit from last time I came where I said, you know, there's nothing y'all can do to override state law. There is some things that, and Greenville has shown me that, that you can do. There is some, um, things that, and Greenville has shown me that, that you can do as long as safety precautions are taken. They, you know, local home rule, we have the right to do some special things in special circumstances.
In fairness to you, there's not a lot of precedent or case law or anything else in the state for you to base it on.
No, we are flying solo here.
I, I think we're all concerned about the safety aspect and, and also the state law. And, uh, and, and certainly what's the best to do. We want, we want to do something, we want, certainly we want to.
We want to keep bicycles safe, we want to.
Bicycle friendly.
Right, we, we don't want to put undue liability on homeowners for parking in bicycle lanes. I mean, it's, it's a tough spot to be in, so I was trying to accommodate everybody. Um, but the, but here's, here's the other aspect we hadn't thought about. Is that we have at least 40 feet on either side of Hayne Avenue. Um, yeah, there's plenty of room to make everybody happy here. It's just all time and money. But, and, and that's something y'all need to consider as well. But if we wanted to make the space there, we, you know, obviously we could. Um, but the easiest, you know, solution, you know, is the safety cones. And we could do that for a year and see if it works and come back and revisit.
Uh, I wonder how public safety feels about that. I'd like to have someone, Charles.
We have a team here. I'd be happy to give up the microphone.
Huh? Could, Charles, could you, could you talk about that a little bit and, and how you feel about, uh, launching cones or signs up, uh, even though they might be temporary? And then if there's a problem, if there's a, you know, collision or anything, what, what is the liability of the city? And I don't know if you can speak to that or not.
I would defer to the attorney for the liability, of course. But, um, not having seen it work, I didn't make the trip with Paige to Greenville. Uh, of course, I'd like to do some research, more research on that. Um, but, uh, I think the legality of it is, it is something that can be done with street closing permit or set up some type of system to do that.
Yes. Well, that's personally what, one of the things. I, I know I was most concerned with was that.
Yes.
And, uh, the fact that there is a state law and, and then if, if something happens, we don't want our city to be, you know, have to stand for two million, whatever it might be, you know, to pay for something that we allowed to happen. And there's a law and maybe public safety didn't, didn't stop and give them a ticket, you know, that kind of thing. But you feel, you feel comfortable about the fact, uh, and you too, Paige, having been up there and talked with them, you feel comfortable about the idea of, of calling, talking to public safety about putting, putting something out there indicating temporary? Is that, is that what it would be?
That's right. In fact, that's the, um, solution that the South Carolina Department of Transportation engineer liked best. He thought that that gave everybody the most notice about what's going on. He said, you know, roads close all the time, a garbage truck will stop in the middle of the road, but they have the big flashing lights, uh, that notifies everyone that, hey, you have to negotiate around this truck. Um, and, and we could, the public safety would be incumbent upon them to put in some sort of procedure, uh, with the cooperation of DOT to say, okay, the cones have to be a certain, you know, height, they have to be, you know, visible from a certain distance and things of that nature so that safety is, is taken into consideration. That, you know, obviously roads close all the time for different reasons. And if they don't take the precautions to keep people safe, we're liable.
So we could do that throughout the city then? We could put bike lanes and then just make everybody put their cones out, buy their own cones or go down and get them from public safety?
Ideally, uh, this would, is a situation for a special, you know, scenario like, like we have today.
We can break the law on Hayne, but not the rest of the streets.
Well, no. Well, and, and I see where you're going with that. Um, it would be my position that if the cones are out there every day, all day, that we need to, you know, come back to a different situation. If it's just the Sunday afternoon, um, baby shower, uh, or the occasional, um, use of the cones, then I, I think that that's, it's a workable solution. But you're right. If it's, if they're going to park in them all the time, we need to revisit and say it's not really a bike lane after all.
No, I'm, I'm talking about going with the spirit intent of what we would be doing.
Sure.
Um, and, and we have a state law that says that if it's a bike lane, you can't park in it. And we are taking it upon ourselves to assume the liability that it's okay in this case because we all agree that that's what we want to do. And you're comfortable with that from a legal perspective?
As long as safety precautions are taken, I think that, that's, you kind of balance those issues. And that's, and that, we're just taking Greenville's lead on this, not every situation is, is cut and dry.
But the law, the law is pretty specific on bike lanes, otherwise we wouldn't have them.
Right. Um, there's also a section in that same code that says that local governments, you know, have the ability to, um, govern, you know, parking and things of that nature. And I think this would fall into that. But you're absolutely right that strictly speaking, you can't park in bike lanes.
Yeah, just following through this, this course of thought. Um, should a guest or a visitor park in front of a house or a place of business there on Hayne and either not know about the cone requirement or not do the cone requirement and some catastrophe happen, um, then, then we'd be back to, to the starting point of that, that liability for illegal parking with a bike lane, right?
Absolutely. If they, if they weren't, um, if they didn't give notice to the cyclist or the motorist that they're blocking the bike lane, they would be liable.
And it'd be, it's fairly likely to say that there might be frequent lapses in, in that post, in putting up the.
I would imagine so, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a couple of questions. What, it seemed like we're putting the burden on the citizens there in ADPS. Uh, you know, there is a funeral home there. Uh, usually they would know ahead of time, so the funeral director would have to call and get a permit to park on both sides of the street for the funeral and for the viewing or whatever there was there.
It's my understanding that.
That's what I'm hearing. And then public safety would go out and block off two blocks or whatever, because it's a fairly large funeral. The parking area is still up around there and first thing you know, they're lined up on both sides of the road. Can be for several blocks.
Well, it's my understanding that, uh, funeral homes generally have, you know, standing, you know, permission to do it during services. That's what DOT was explaining to me. But, you know, technically, yeah, the public safety should go out there and make sure everything's safe.
Well, Paige.
Now, let, let me get one more thing. Now, uh, the other part of it is, there's a dentist office there and there's, there's two businesses in the parking lot and it fills up especially in the morning. And I personally have parked out on the street. So Dr. Hale, the, the dentist there would have to get a permit every day for the possibility of people parking there? And I'm not being facetious, but I mean, this is a real case.
If we went with the route of training our residents to mark it properly, then I maybe would need to go over that part. But if it happens every day, like I said, the bike lane, it probably needs to come up and it needs to be a share of it. If parking is occurring that often.
Yeah, it's going to be awful, awful, uh, uh, let's say it'll be on the front page of the news is somebody's grandmother's parked in a bike lane in front of their daughter's house and they get a ticket. I feel sure the Aiken Standard is going to be well pleased with that article.
But, um, and, you know, what often is to take the bike lanes up in front of the businesses in particular? That's just, you know, I guess a few hundred yards, but, um.
Hey, I just want to be sure, but it, we're going down a slippery slope, I think.
Actually, I don't want to jump ahead of Steve, but you had a question.
Yeah, Paige, uh, you mentioned other communities have this, uh, getting a cone and putting it in there. Not meaning to be facetious at all. What if the individual says, I want it here permanently? I mean, that's the first, uh, the first question. Who sets the rules on how often you can call public safety? Uh, is there any time restriction on it? Is there any day restriction or?
There is no doubt that, that the privilege would need to be used judiciously.
It doesn't work in legal, now you know that.
And, I mean, it would be, need to be used, um, uh, you know, when you really need it. I mean, if it's a situation where you're just going to have parking out in front of your house all the time, I think that's an overuse of that privilege, um, to block it off if needed. Um, it's certainly, if you're living in a community where you're trying to accomplish everyone's needs, you need to, um, you know, balance your own needs against someone else's.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I don't mean to be lighthearted about this. But, and I know we're trying to get answers to some questions. But we're taking a subject. And I know there are questions and we need answers to these questions. But it seems to get more complicated the more questions we have. And to me, we need to, to break it down into some simple things. The legality of it all and whether we want it removed or remain as it is. That's it. It's, it's as simple as that, in my opinion, in, in my humble opinion. And, uh, I'd like to, Mr. Mayor, to, to hear from the audience, if you don't mind, and see what they've got to say and move on.
That's very well.
Yeah, fine, Tom, come on out. And why don't we just, others that want to speak will go down this way, come across, and then come back this way, okay? If you want to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We're making a habit of this, I guess.
Yes, we are.
Uh, my name is Tom Lex. I'm a citizen of, uh, the city of Aiken. I'm also the chairman of the Aiken County Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. When I've addressed you in the past, I've pretty much addressed you from the position of being Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Tonight, I'm also speaking as a concerned citizen. And I want to thank the city solicitor for her explanation of options and, and getting, getting it, a common understanding of what, what's being proposed. But I think it's important that there, that we get some other common ground. There's some other facts and assumptions that if we can establish some common ground, I think it'll help us move forward and, and make the right decision. First of all, fact, the city council unanimously endorsed the county bicycle pedestrian plan and the objective for the city of Aiken to become bicycle friendly. That was done in November of 2012. And in there, we, it's, it's recognized that by becoming bicycle and walking friendly, there are significant benefits to the city and to the residents. Both economic, or economic benefits, health benefits, livability. And we also recognize that to accomplish our goal, and we've had this discussion a number of times, there are financial constraints. The plan, if we were to implement it all at once, would take millions of dollars that we don't have. We know that it's going to have to be a long-term process, that we have to start small and, but make steady progress because of those financial constraints. We all agree that that's, that's a common ground, that common position we have. The other point I want to make, Hayne Avenue, it's not the end, it's the beginning. We all want that beautiful oak, but the only way we get that beautiful oak is by starting with the acorn. Hayne Avenue is our acorn. The objective is to get connectivity in the city. Hayne Avenue is the first link in getting connectivity with USC Aiken and other, other activities on Richland and, and, um, allowing USC Aiken students to, to ride from USC into the city of Aiken. It's the first link. We have more to do, but we have to start somewhere. The other common ground is the portion of Hayne that we're talking about that's in debate is only that portion that currently has the bike lanes. The other portion of Hayne which has share of the lane, it's already recognized. It's too narrow to put bike lanes in. We've already accepted share of the lanes being the acceptable risk mitigator for that portion of Hayne. Having said that, with our objective of becoming bicycle and walking friendly, the only way we get there, it means we have to reduce both perceived risk and real risk. And with that, I want to come out with what the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee strong recommendation is and how we proceed with Hayne. The city's option 3B, which keeps the bike lanes as currently installed and allows parking with a permit from Department of Public Safety. I'll talk about what that permit process can be a little bit later, but the concept is a permit. I will say that that permit process, we ought to focus more on how we streamline that, make it non-bureaucratic, make it as simple as we can possibly make it. And, and I'll say, make it as easy as picking up the phone to order a pizza. In fact, it might even be easier because you don't have to decide what toppings you're going to put on it, but it needs to be that easy. Shell House, we've heard about the funeral home. We, the funeral home should be given their own signs with the same words on it that we put on, on, uh, for residents when they want to temporarily close a park line, that's the, the, the bike lane. The words would be, "Bike lane closed, parking permitted by order of Aiken Department of Public Safety." Give the funeral home their own signs, they can put them out when they need it. They don't have to go to public safety to get, to get them. They're, they've already been authorized to use those when they need them. The approach, I think we heard from city solicitor and other discussions, it's, it's used in other cities, it's legally acceptable. Clearly, in my travels across the country and all the top bike-friendly cities in the country, they have had to have bike lanes closed for many reasons. It could be maintenance, it could be, uh, any, any number of things, but they put signs up and say, "Bike lane closed." So it's a, it's a common practice. Now, I will say, this, the, what appears to be the city's preferred option, which is 2C, uh, and, and that is by, heard reference to buffers and using the wi- uh, the, the wide shoulder, et cetera, et cetera. First of all, the, the buffer that's being referred to is extending the, the parking zone because we know that between the curb and the existing white line, it's not wide enough to technically be parking, so we're going to put some, some lines or hash marks there to extend that out. You extend it out, well, it's, it's still not wide enough in accordance with the guidelines that are best practices, guidelines that are somewhat national standards. It comes from the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials. It's those guidelines that are presented in the, in the Bicycle Pedestrian Plan as an appendix in there for the best practices and how you, uh, the dimensions and the layout for all the different bicycle infrastructure options that are available. I'll also say that option 2C actually increases risk to cyclists. And I'll make that case on, on risk analysis. Now, you've always seen me up here talking as the bike guy, a bike advocate. I need to share with you why I'm qualified to talk about risk analysis. I've had 30, 38 years in engineering, projects, operations, and most of that's in the nuclear field. The last 15 and a half years, spent in senior management positions at the Savannah River Site, manager of projects, chief engineer. My last responsibility, I was in charge of the division doing all of the safety analysis and accident analysis for nuclear and high hazard operations that lost Alamos National Lab. So I'm qualified to talk about risk. Let me, let me define what I mean by risk. There are two components, consequences and probability. The consequences, none of us want. That's a fatality or a, or an injury to cyclists. Same thing can be done when we talk about pedestrians. But right now for Hayne Avenue, we're talking about cyclists. We can control, we can, we can manage probability. We can manage probability by using risk mitigators. And, and by, by controlling probability, I mean controlling the probability that there's going to be an undesirable interaction between a bicycle and a vehicle. So what are the risk mitigation strategies and the, and the order of priority for risk mitigation strategies in our situation? The first priority would be have a bike path. Well, that doesn't apply here, but that definitely gives you the highest risk mitigation. Somewhere along the line, we're going to be talking, where can we put bike paths in Aiken as we try to become bicycle friendly? That one, we're not going to talk about anymore. On the, and, and going down the list, the next one is buffered bike lanes. Now, when I talk buffered bike lanes, I'm not talking about a buffer zone between the parked car and the bike lane. I'm talking about a buffer zone which gives additional distance between the bike lane and the, and the, and the traffic lane. That's where the buffer is, that's why it's, it reduces risk. Bike, the next order of priority for risk mitigation would be just a straight bike line. line, bike lane that is adjacent to the vehicle travel lanes. And next would be share the lane, and then finally, wide shoulders. Now, all of those are acceptable risk mitigation approaches. You try to use the one that fits best for the situation. The one that fits best for the situation to mitigate risk is the configuration that we have on Hayne Avenue today. So let me do the actual, very qualitative risk analysis. And I'm going to make some assumptions. I'm going to assume that option 2C fits the existing roadway footprint. Because there's some debate whether it really will. That option assumes that there's a parking width of six to seven feet. And I'll point out, by the design guidelines that are best practices, it says that when you have a bike lane that's adjacent to parking, the parking space width, not the length of the space, but the width, needs to be a minimum of 12 feet and a preferred of 14 and a half. The reason for that is so that when passenger, when vehicle occupants, in this case, drivers, open their door, it does not put that door into the bicycle lane and add the risk to the cyclist that what happens, we call them, they get doored. There have been numerous cases across the country of cyclists being killed because of that type of accident. That's not something we want. The, so with option 2C as compared to the option that we have out there today, we actually eliminate the equivalent of a buffered bike lane because we have some, we have space between the existing bike lane and the travel lane. So it is, while it's not crosshatched, it's not painted, the fact is, it's a quasi buffer zone which reduces risk. By moving in 2C, we move the bike lane out to the edge of the travel lane. So it adds an incremental element of risk. As I mentioned, the parking issue, we have the risk of cyclists being doored. The other thing is, by putting 2C out there, it's going to reduce the distance that we have the bike lane because with the road narrowing down, we have to shorten the length of the bike lane and revert to share the lane. In this, in this case, we may have, you know, the share the lane is an acceptable risk mitigator, but now we're going backwards in putting share the lane there, so it's adding risk back into the situation. A big risk is the fact that when you have a bike lane that is between the travel lane and the parking zone, motor vehicle operators want to get to that parking lane. And it's human nature, it's been proven, that once they pass a cyclist, that cyclist is out of their mind. And when they make that right turn in front of the cyclist, what happens is what we call the right hook. They take the cyclist down. So we add risk when we do that, when we go to that configuration. The other point I want to make is that by applying 2C, we are adding an element of increased risk 100% of the time for cyclists in that configuration. When we apply 3B, where we apply, where we use temporary closure. And if you just use some basic assumptions, how many special events are going to occur in the course of a week, a month, a year? And I'm going to assume that, let's say there's, every week, there's at least six hours during that week where someone along there has an event where they need to close the lane. And that happens every week of the year, and that accounts for about 3% of the time that that bike lane would be closed down. So now we have a cyclist who's exposed to that extra risk for 3% of the time, and they may not have it at all because they can always make the decision not to ride that bike lane and change their route. That 3% is further reduced when you say, a lot of that's going to be at night when most people have already done their own independent risk assessment and said, "It's not safe to ride my bike at night, so I'm not going to ride it." So at most, you've got 2% of the time when we have an impact where we add risk. As opposed to 2C, where we've added the risk and that's going to be that way all the time, we've exposed the cyclist to that extra risk 100% of the time. Does it make sense? Do you understand where I'm coming from? So, what are the conclusions? The conclusion is, what's there today is the best option should be left in place. Option 2C is a less desirable. If we were starting from scratch, we might say, yeah, okay, we can do a trade-off and accept 2C. But we're not. We're already there with 3B. We've already spent the money on 3B. And I would say that because 2C does not meet national best practices in terms of parking lane width to prevent the issue with bicycle door interaction, the city could be at significant liability because we did something that didn't stand up the best practices. I maintain, as a private citizen, concerned citizen, that we're being financially irresponsible to spend money to revert to an option that increases risk, that runs totally counter to the whole basis of risk analysis. You spend money on doing things that will reduce risk. So, I think the recommendation, I think the recommendation from the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee provides the best compromise solution for the bike lanes on Hayne Avenue. It's a compromise because we accept that there are times they need to be shut down. We didn't talk about yard debris. I would say it would be an acceptable part of the compromise to say, on whatever day they have yard debris pickup, the night before, they can go put their cones out because cones do indicate a hazard. It could be anything from yard debris to a pothole. Now, we do need to have the signs there designating closure because they send a clear message. Just using safety cones, it's ambiguous. You don't know what it means. So by having a sign there that very clearly explicitly says, "Lane closed, parking permitted," and guess what, it's not the homeowner saying it's okay, it's Department of Public Safety saying it's okay. And then residents putting cones out for yard debris, that's following a standard practice of marking a hazard. What am I, does everyone agree with your approach? Does it work?
Under my comments, Dick, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. You began by saying that it's very important for the bicycle community to have continuity throughout the city and that Hayne Avenue was step one. Would you not have connectivity if Hayne Avenue were shared lane marking, given what you said about higher risk, which is almost automatic?
Well, we already have share the lane markings because that's what we're limited to. Clearly, it would give you connectivity. We're going to use share the lane. In fact, when we get, when we come off of Hayne and transition on to Park, one of our next priorities is Park Avenue, and we are going to use share the lane. The point is that, once we have something in place that gives us the best risk mitigation strategy, it doesn't make sense to spend money to take that away.
Understand, but the very best risk mitigation is bike lanes throughout the city.
And what we're saying is that that's not always practical.
I understand, and it doesn't seem to be practical here. Let me just make a comment.
No, I disagree with you. It is practical because they're there, they work. The only issue is parking that people want.
And you don't mind people who pay taxes that can't park in front of their house? That's okay with you? And you don't mind people that can't put their yard waste out?
Look, there are a lot of places, a lot of places in the city and the country where people can't park in front of their house.
But guess what? This is Aiken. Let's talk about Hayne Avenue.
And I am talking about Hayne Avenue because for day-to-day living, they have driveways and they have areas where two, three cars can, when they have a party and they need to bring people in, we make it as simple a practice as possible that they can close that bike lane and get parking for whatever number of cars it takes to fill up that section of the road.
Well, let me make two comments, and they're both going to be controversial, and I would respect the audience's right, I respect my right to give my feelings. Number one, I think there's two of us who are at fault in creating this terrible issue that we have. And the first one is city council. We approve the, we approve, by resolution, we approve the essence of the plan. And I think all of us would make that vote again today if we had to. We want to be a biker-friendly community. We want to support the bikers. We had no idea at that point in time, nor do I think honestly, Tom, that you and the bike community understood what the effects would be of putting bike lanes on Hayne Avenue. Putting bike lanes in the city of Aiken is a discussion that needs to be had. But in my opinion, we're getting off to a wrong start. You want to gain something for the biking community at the expense of other citizens who would lose the right, or businesses who would lose some rights that they, that everybody else has. It's just my opinion. I think it's the wrong battle to fight. With regard to the use of the cones, I would hope that council would consider asking an Attorney General opinion whether we have the right to change state law with regard to parking and bike lanes. I want to be safe for the city. I don't want liability to accrue to the city. And in my uneducated opinion, if you've got a car that's parked in a bike lane, even with cones in it, and a vehicle hits that automobile, I would suspect that it's the owner of that automobile that is going to be held liable. And I would like to see a legal opinion on that.
We're dealing with two different situations here. The one situation is, it's clearly identified that the bike lane is closed by order of Department of Public Safety. There is a case, if a vehicle parks in there without that official closure, they're going to be liable. Now, someone would say, well, gee, they parked there, we didn't, it's not being enforced and they're parking in there. Well, I'm going to say, as I ride throughout the city and the county and I see every day people running red lights, they don't get stopped. They're not being enforced. But guess what? We're not here talking about, let's take red lights out. So why should we talk about taking bike lanes out?
First of all, I wouldn't agree with that. I think if Public Safety sees somebody running a red light, I have every confidence that they're going to cite that person. I have no doubt about that in my mind.
If someone's parked in a bike lane when it's not officially closed, then they should be cited too.
If that's the way the law says, I would completely agree with you.
That's the way it says.
Well, yes, it says you can't park. And it doesn't give the city the authority to say, ah, you can't park except it's a funeral.
Yes, it does.
Well, I'd like you to show me the citation.
We close roads, temporary closure for the lobster race for Aiken, Macon.
That's Newbury. We have a, we have a practice of closing Newbury.
Well, but you can do that anywhere, if you want a temporary closure on a bike lane.
It's a, it's a stretch in my mind, Tom, but.
Well, I guess we're going to agree to disagree.
We've been there since the beginning. Thank you.
Wait a minute, Tom.
I appreciate your risk training and all that. I had a little bit of that at USC, the other one up in California. But basically, I see a little danger in complacency among either a driver or a bicycle rider if the lane is closed, or a cone, so to speak, so parking is allowed, but if there's no cars in there, is that biker going to cut out and possibly get rear-ended by a passing vehicle?
I'm not understanding. Well, we're talking about, we're talking about a sign that clearly, if you just use cones without a sign, it doesn't tell the cyclist what the situation is.
Okay, but does the sign have to correspond to where the cone is?
No. You put, you, the practice, you put a sign, closing the bike lane at the beginning of, at where the closure starts, and you might put it at a couple intermediate points in between. You don't need cones at that point. You have signs in there. It's the same as when you look at a street and you go in there and you see the sign, no parking signs between the hours of XXX. They have signs at various intervals. That's sending a clear message of what a motor vehicle operator has to be aware of when they're trying to park. This is kind of a little bit of a reverse situation. It's telling the cyclist what he's got, what he or she has to be aware of. If you just use cones without that message, now there's a problem.
I'm at a loss. What does the sign say? I mean, is it up there permanently?
No, it is a freestanding temporary sign that gets put in place when it's necessary to close the lane. And it says very clearly, "Bicycle lane closed, parking permitted by order of Department of Public Safety."
Now, what does a biker do when he sees that sign?
He makes his own, his own personal risk assessment of whether he's going to continue on that route outside of the bike lane, or whether he's going to turn around and find a different route. At that point, it's their personal decision of what they want to do because it's okay because you've given them upfront notice that the bike lane is closed. Had you just put a cone there, they wouldn't have known what that cone was probably covered. But when you put the words on there, they know.
The sign's going to say, if you see a cone?
Forget the cone. I mean, keep, we're keeping, we've got this focus on cones. We want a sign. We want a sign. It's going to be that big, by that big, freestanding, maybe a teepee shape, it could be on a pole, but it's stuck right.
Is the Public Safety going to put that in place, or is it the homeowner?
Public Safety, for the private homeowners that calls and said, "I want to, I want to close the bike lane because I'm having this party," they have to call Public Safety. Public Safety would come out with their signs and boom, stick them in place. In the case of Shell House, foregone conclusion that they need to close their lane. Now, they don't have a defined schedule, but we know they're going to do it on a regular basis. That would be a case where they're given a standing permit to take signs that they're in possession of and put it out to close the lanes where they need them for parking for their funeral services. That's the recommendation.
Oh, that's just 2% of the time anyway. Isn't that correct?
I'm sorry?
All of this is just 2% of the time anyway.
That's a, that's a, based on your assumptions, you know, even if it's 5%, if you want to double what I did, it's still better from the standpoint of.
Can we get the people?
About a month ago, just one second. About a month ago, I asked, how does the mail get delivered? It's a legitimate question.
Mr. Mayor, let's have respect, please.
When they make deliveries on Park Avenue, how do they make deliveries? They double park.
Well, that's exactly my point. What if, what about UPS or FedEx?
Double park. They'll double park, just like they do on Park Avenue. It's standard practice. That's what they do. So if we're not going to do it there, if we're not going to do it on Hayne, then we need to stop doing it on Park.
Mr. Lex, let's go back to November of 2012, when this was before city council. I've been able, unable to find, and so has the city staff, anything that was said other than share the road, share the, and share the lane. No one ever mentioned about no parking.
What is stated in there, it says that the city endorses the bicycle pedestrian plan and the con, and the idea of Aiken becoming bicycle friendly.
What did it say? There's, when you put a lane down, it's no parking. Because you know good and well, if that would have been said, this wouldn't ever pass.
And Reggie, what I'll tell you is, yes, we've learned some lessons on Hayne. And we factor those in as we move forward to say, we know there are certain areas where the bike plan calls for bike lanes, but we're not going to use bike lanes. We're going to use share the lane so we don't take over park, take parking out.
But you didn't answer my question.
I'm answering. The question on Hayne is, the bike lane is there already.
No, you didn't answer my question. I'm sorry. I said, did anybody say, and goodness, this is gone, this thing is years old, and no other city had a parking problem. And nobody brought it up to us, either staff, or you, or in the writing.
All right, and what I would say is that. And I would say the resolution was put forward, and I was at that meeting. In fact, I didn't even have to talk. Nobody asked me to come up and talk. There were no questions about it. It was just, it's a good idea. We know we want to do it. Oh, by the way, it's in the city, I don't know if you call it a strategic plan now or whatever it was, but there was, there is an objective to become bicycle and walking friendly in the strategic plan. The bike ped advised, the bike ped plan is that plan that will get us there. It'll take time, but it'll get us there.
I must remind you, this went through planning, it came to us, and nobody ever mentioned about parking. I find that very odd.
Then you didn't think about it, and nobody else thought about it, and shame on us, we dropped the ball. Now we're talking about it, but now we're trying to come up with a solution. Does that say because we didn't talk about it then, we ought to drop the whole idea of becoming bike friendly? I don't think so.
I didn't say that. All I said is, you need to listen to me for a change, okay? All I said is, we said we would be bike-friendly and share the road. And that just meant something to me. And if somebody said, oh, if you put a lane down, there won't be parking on it, I think we'd have had a different conclusion. We would have probably never had all these meetings. We would have solved the problem two years ago.
Yeah, and we would have been behind, we would have been behind the times in terms of how we stack up against competitive cities who are also trying to appeal to improve livability. livability for their citizens and economic development. And it's been proven, becoming biking and walking friendly is good for the community. And we want to improve.
Yeah. I thank you, I thank you for your comments. And unfortunately, uh, I don't, uh, I don't agree with taking parking away from businesses when we're struggling to get businesses in town. And then we talk about, and the initial report came out, parking, bicycle lanes on Park and Richland, now that's been changed to share the road. And I'm, I'm sorry, but this, the, the scope keeps changing, and, uh, I just have to, uh, vote my own conscience. You know, I'm at where 1A is, remove the bike lanes and bicycle lanes and install on Hayne Avenue.
I'm going to repeat what I stated last meeting. The bicycle pedestrian plan, the bicycle pedestrian plan is a vision, it's a concept. It's a, um, it's not a verbatim compliance procedure. As we go through it and we see where the consultant, Alta Planning, who we talked about earlier, is coming out doing another study on, on Hayne, Alta Planning did that plan. They got input from the citizens. There were public comment sessions. They put things in there that said, from a vision standpoint, these routes would be good to have bike lanes. We are looking at those today. I'm going to take it a step further in vision and say, clearly, we can't do it because Aiken, as opposed to some other cities, we don't have multi-level parking garages. But 20 years from now, will we? And if we have them, can we eliminate on-street parking on certain streets that we currently have on-street parking? Probably. Can we put bike lanes in then? Probably. That's a vision. We have to have a vision.
Let's look at today's vision. Did the consultant say to the citizens, and in the writing, that if we put in lanes, you can't park on them?
Did not. And I, I understand where you're coming from, so there, there's no use browbeating me. I mean, I got my opinion. You know, I'm a professional engineer, I do project management today, and I understand the, the backup of what we vote on in city council. And we like to have all the facts when they are. I agree with you in one point, we got what we got, but we got to do something with what we have. And, uh, taking parking places away from a business especially, I just think that's
Thank you for letting me make my comments.
Okay, let, let's see at this point, uh, who would like to speak? Let's go down and come across, come, come back. Who would like to speak here? Okay, come on up, just give us your name, please. Hopefully you can limit it to two or three minutes.
I'm doing what I can.
I said that early on.
I keep it sure as I possibly can. I'm Carl Fornes, I'm a, I live on Magnolia Street Southeast in the Ray Walker neighborhood, I believe. Uh, I'm also a professor at USC Aiken. Uh, I'd first like to open up, uh, answering Councilman Ebner's question, uh, in the appendices of the report, it pretty much clearly says that bike lanes only are no parking. I hope perhaps you have not gotten around to reading the report. In fact, Councilman Dwar, have you gotten around to reading?
Yes, I have. I've, I've read the report, and I think everybody on council by now has read the report.
That is good to hear.
It wasn't available in November the 20th of 2012, though.
Okay, well, it's good to hear that you've gotten around to reading it. Um, my major concern, and it's the same concern I brought up in January, and, and it seems that, uh, there's a lot of talk about rights of people. Uh, at this point, we've already spent the money on the Hayne Avenue parking lanes. My money, my taxpaying money. To remove those lanes is to spend my taxpaying money, again, to allow for private parking on a public street. That's my money that you're spending. I understand there's an assumption of parking on public streets when it's available. At this point, it is not. And I, I'm sorry, and I'm, the council's been very upright and forthright in apologizing to folks, uh, if that was a mistake, putting that on without, uh, putting the bike lane in without notifying the citizens. But as my dad used to say, that train has left the station, and we're, we are where we are.
Well, sorry, but the train hasn't left the station. It's public parking on public streets, and that's what we're talking about, Carl.
We do not create, we could, we allow public parking, and that's what I think Mr. Lex was, uh, suggesting, was suggesting, which I, which is option 3B, which is basically to allow for public parking with a streamlined permit process. And perhaps allow for 3C, which would be cone thing, for perhaps yard waste, and allowing that to happen for, and I'm not sure I understand what the concerns are with those two options. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure, is it, is it an issue with, and I'm, I'm sure citizens will get up here and talk, but perhaps that, that they don't have phone lines, or something along those lines, to call in, or even maybe set up a forum on a, on the website, on the Aiken, the city of Aiken website. That does not seem to me that difficult. I do it with my students all the time when I'm asking for feedback from them. And it's a pretty quick sort of streamlined process. Uh, and it's an important process to go through in planning stuff. I, I guess I'm just concerned that we started in here in, I think, probably in September, and this went until December, and we were, went back and forth with some email, Councilman Dwar, if I remember correctly.
Respectful emails?
Yes. And, uh, at that point, we were, uh, talking about compromise. I would put it on the table pretty easily, and I would like, and I, maybe if, with council's permission, if anyone would like to make a motion, let's just take option 1A and option 3A off the board. Let's just say, that's it. If we're serious about compromise, those are the two options that say, we will not compromise. If we take those two off the board entirely, then we're talking compromise. Until then, what we're talking about is digging our heels in and playing games, and getting up here and browbeating, whatever you want to call it, exchanging voices.
Carl, I'm, I'm, I gotta take exception to what you're saying. We're not trying to browbeat anybody. My God, this is the fourth time we have before, appeared before the public to discuss this issue. So we're not trying to browbeat. If we were trying to browbeat, we would have just discussed it in staff, we would have made a motion, and you'd all be gone, maybe unhappy, maybe not. The issue is a serious one for all of us. You're asking us to approve a process to get the bicycle-friendly community program underway, and to approve that by denying the right of somebody who owns a house to have, for them or their guests to park in front of that house. It's a pretty serious issue. It might not be to some of the people who aren't affected, but I can assure you, we have heard from constituents who are affected, and they don't want to have to go and get a cone and so forth. I don't know about whether the cone is even legal, but I don't know why a resident, and this is just my perspective, why a resident should have to go to public safety, or buy a cone, or follow a procedure to, to park in front of their house, when, when, just to satisfy a mistake that we all admit we made. I don't think anybody here is, is aware, would agree that it wasn't a mistake. I, I mentioned it too in the beginning, uh, the thing I did mention is our failure to tell a resident what we were doing. Um, but that's consistent, we didn't know what we were doing, so how could, how could they know what we were doing? Uh, it's, it's just an error, and we can walk it back, and we should walk it back, and we should do so with, with, um, of, of, uh, a clear statement of our philosophy that we, that we support Aiken, uh, being a biker-friendly community. We just don't think it should be at the expense of denying one group of citizens, uh, a, a, a right to make that happen. And I think we could, we could put a shared lane marking, uh, on Hayne Avenue, and, and we'd all press on and, and get this beyond us.
Mr. Mayor, I may, but I continue with my, a couple of comments.
Okay, I'm sure there are others that want to speak, so please.
I was speaking, uh, uh, by browbeating, I was using Councilman Ebner's word with that. I was not implying that any browbeating was going.
My apologies.
Uh, you're still using the word right to park in a public street. There's no unwritten right to park in a public, on a public street. We, we know that and we understand that. There's no right to park in Richland, in the middle of Richland and that sort of stuff. So, we're still doing that. What I'm asking is, so I guess what I'm hearing from you is, you are okay with taking option 1A off the table? And I'm, I'm willing to, I'm willing to do that. And I think most of the folks who support the bike lane are willing to take option 3A off the table. If we do, if we simply take those two off the table, then we're talking compromise. We use this word, the C-word quite often. But what I'm seeing from several members of council, isn't compromise with that C-word, I'm seeing capitulation. And that is not the idea that we began with. I would love to see compromise, I'd love to see things happen. I believe 3B and 3C are the proper solutions. And I'm just wondering if the rest of the, if it is the will of council, they have to be unanimous, obviously, to take 1A and 3A off the table entirely.
At this point, I don't think it is. Yeah, we want to get on with other people, let them speak as well. Thank, thank you.
It could take less than 30 seconds, I know you. No, I'm just, one sentence. I'm Betty Ryberg, and I've been here before. I just want, I'm hearing, we're talking about safety, and the other side is talking about parking. So I really, I, I think we're forgetting the safety issue of this. I'll bet everybody in this room has heard a story of somebody who has maybe through their own fault, or something else, fallen or gotten hit while they're on their bicycle. So let's be concerned about the safety issues. And I have talked to Alice Hale, Dr. Hale, who lives on Hayne Avenue, works on Hayne Avenue. She is off-the-road parking, and I've talked to Robert Shellhouse. So I think both of them are happy with the signs. But let's keep safety more than parking.
Charles, my phone, uh, 7:47, thanks to us, and I don't think I'm going to be able to beat her, Tom, but I'll try. Uh, I think the concern is economic viability of this. We've got a statement that Aiken wants to be a bicycle-friendly community. When I bought my house, I happened to buy it on a, on a bike path. And I thought about that when I bought my house. I said, I want to live in this place where it, where it is bike-friendly, happened to be near, near Bank Stairs. And I think where we are now, we're going to make a statement, if we want to be bike-friendly, we're going to make a statement, we don't want to be bike-friendly. And we make a statement, we don't want to be bike-friendly, I think it can affect the economic viability of Aiken.
Who's next, going that way? Nobody? Well, somebody, yes.
Maybe they want to line up.
Yeah. Anyone else would like to speak? Why don't you come on up and, uh, get ready to speak, be fine.
My name is Jeannette Donovan, I live on Bernard. I'm a business owner, as well as a homeowner in Aiken. I pay a lot of taxes. So just because I drive a bike does not mean I don't pay taxes. And people that choose to ride a bike instead of paying, instead of having a car, if they don't pay taxes, that's their business. But don't lump everybody into that. But, anyway, side note. I put online a petition in support of saving the ba, bike lane. There were, at the time that I left this, this evening, there was 592 signatures in less than a few weeks, all in support of keeping the bike lane as it is, as well as continuing the bike lanes throughout Aiken. As well, yesterday, there was a bike rally to support saving the bike lane, and over 300, nearly 300 people came to support that, and gathered together to show they wanted the bike lane to remain, showing that the, the community is in support of it. The people that are against and want parking all have driveways except for maybe one or two people. The area on Hayne Avenue has an exorbitant amount of side streets which are available for parking. So I don't understand why these are not options for the residents that want to have parties and have parking. Also, the business owners, I haven't heard any of them speak up, that have businesses on like Hayne. So let them speak for themselves. I also wonder why four people who are against this have so much sway, when there are hundreds of people in support of it. People are willing to travel to Aiken to use the bike lane, as well as other cities. We want to create a community that is safe and appealing for people of all ages, backgrounds, and, and income levels. So let's continue to do that, and create an atmosphere.
A question of all, I, I have one question. Of all those people that you said supported the bike lanes, how many of them lived on Hayne Avenue?
I'm not sure, because it did not provide addresses.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, you know, it's kind of personal.
Mayor, Mayor, it was on internet, it was on the internet. It was 500 people from around the country who would know nothing about.
But if we, I, I did pass out, I did give copies, and a majority of them, I'd say at least 75 percent were from South Carolina, as well as Finland, Canada, all over the world.
But they don't know Aiken.
They, we want them to know Aiken. We want them to know Aiken.
So why would they come here and see Aiken?
Okay.
They have it already.
Next.
Comments need to address the chair. All comments need to address the chair.
There are supporters of.
No, but there's one that I know of, I just passed up the name.
I have a question for.
Okay, we want to ask a question, 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 another question.
I have a question, can you, uh, can you wait just one second?
Can't get away.
I think everybody agrees that Aiken should be a bike-friendly community. However, it kind of puzzles me why the bike lane on Hayne, which is probably less than a mile long, should be the sole determinant whether we are bike-friendly or not.
Because from what I understand is that, that this is setting a precedent, that you retract what you have already decided, unanimously decided to do.
Okay, well, let me ask a.
Deliver the cameras and then answer your question.
Hang on. Let me ask, uh, Tom Lex a question. Okay, if in fact, with one of the models you have, with the buffer zone, the driving lane, uh, and so forth, is Hayne Avenue actually wide enough for all those to take place? You know, the parking, the buffer zone?
No. It's not. 2C, 2C, option 2C, Hayne Avenue is not wide enough for that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. See, this is the, this is the problem I see. I think we're, uh, kind of fighting, uh, purely for the existence of the bike lane, and whether that bike lane determines whether we're bike-friendly or not as far as the city goes, I think that's the wrong argument. I think we should find a, uh, solution in maybe another street, maybe not Hayne, just to find out what it would look like to make, you know, the bikers happy and the vehicles happy, and make, uh, the community happy. That's, you know, I think, even if we did everything we could possibly do to Hayne, it's still not wide enough. So, I, I don't know what the solution is. And as far as the attorney goes, you know, she said, you know, we're going to be liable for, uh, some kind of a mishap.
Steve, you said something I can't let, you said it's not wide enough, it's wide enough for the option that's currently there. 2C, and I said it's not wide enough, it's not wide enough for 2C. 2C was the option that is the preferred option by the city. It's not wide enough for that option. It is wide enough for what's already down. And Hayne Avenue is there because it's the, the first step in the link for connectivity with USC Aiken. The other option is, well, we'll continue the bike lanes all the way up Richland and, and, and bring them in that way, but, or over to, uh, wherever, I don't know. But Hayne Avenue is the kindler, gentler street to be able to do this, so it can be bicycle-friendly, as opposed to try to bring them in, uh, all the way on Richland. As it is, the portion of Richland between Hayne and University Parkway, it's going to have to be evaluated to see if we can fit bike lanes in there. We don't know if they'll fit, just by doing a, you know, an eyeball on it, it looks like there's some changes, and I've talked to DOT, they think it's possible to fit them in there. We may have to revert to share the lane on, on Richland because bike lanes won't fit, but it still has to be evaluated. Connectivity is the key issue. Without connectivity, we have nothing.
Isn't there connectivity with share the lanes?
I'm sorry?
Isn't there connectivity with the share of the lane?
Correct. For example, on Richland, if we can't fit the bike lanes in, then we would, remember that order of risk mitigation? The next one down the line is share the lane.
Yeah.
Then we would put share the lane down.
Well, you could do the same thing with Hain, though.
Absolutely. But remember my risk argument. We could go and take everything out that's there today, and just put nothing but share the lane. But we're, again, we're going to be spending money to add risk back. When you do risk reduction or risk mitigation, you want to spend the money to take risk out. So it's going the wrong direction.
Well, most business model, if you've already got sunk costs, and you change direction, sunk costs are gone.
You never use sunk costs in your business model. You're correct. But the, the point is that we, we want safety. We want risk reduction. Why put it back in when there's a simpler solution that solves the problem? Rather than an emotional issue that everyone's hung up on parking from an emotional issue, rather than a factual issue. They can park when they need it. The lanes can be temporarily closed, and they can get their parking. Prior to that bike lane going in, I'll tell you, I was riding my bike up and down Hain Avenue, driving my car, I never saw cars parked on Hain Avenue in that section. Now granted, at night, and that's why Hain Avenue was picked, it was low-hanging fruit. And now, all of a sudden, it's an issue. Well, we'll solve that issue, allow them to park when they have a party, and they need the parking. There is a solution for that. It is a compromise. We can live with that. When they need to put yard weight out, yard waste, compromise, put a red cone, a yellow, orange cone out, marking the hazard. The, the yard waste gets picked up, the cone gets removed. It's, it's simple.
Tom, it seems to me that we're leaving out the people, our citizens, in all this disguise and discussion.
We're what?
We're leaving out our people in this discussion that live on Hain Avenue.
So I'm going to stay, I'm on the way out of here. I'll let them talk.
Yeah, well, well, that's good. But we're talking about folks that have lived here for years and here, years and years, many of them, and they've been, they've, they've had the freedom that they should have had.
The other half of the street lost their figure years and years and years ago.
All right, I didn't interrupt you when you were talking, and I don't appreciate anybody interrupting anybody in here. That's not why we're here. Council has decisions to make, and we'll make them, however we make them. But we don't, we can have respect for each other while we're doing it. These folks have been living on Hain Avenue for a long time.
One B is...
And all of a sudden, and they've had the right to, to park out in there, in the, in the lane, right? Anybody deny that? And they could park all day if they wanted to. Now, all of a sudden, we're saying, no, you can't, unless you want to be fined. You can talk later. You talked already. Okay.
Okay, I'm Leslie Giove, and I don't live on Hain Avenue, I live on Grace Avenue. But I am concerned about where this is going. And I want everyone to know, I believe Aiken should be a bicycle-friendly town.
Absolutely.
But I think there is a better way to do it. And I'm concerned by the precedent that could be set here, and how it could then grow and become a precedent, and become boilerplate for other parts of the historic town that is Aiken. When these, when the bicycle lane was put in on Hain, it was done last May under cover of night. It was, taxpayer money was used to put those lane markings down. Now, having worked on Wall Street for many years, thirty-five plus years, having managed billions of dollars of pension and illiamocentary funds, I too was a risk manager, especially on the illiamocentary side, where you're working with private non, nonprofit organizations you cannot afford to take unnecessary risk. So I understand risk also. People buy homes on a street. All those homeowners on Hain Avenue bought under one set of assumptions, and then they wake up the next morning and just say, I've had a taking, there's been a taking, just like eminent domain, but without notification. They have taken value from my property. I can no longer have someone come by impromptu, and stop by to, to drop something off, or spend an hour, whatever, whatever, whatever. Now you have to call public safety. What's public safety going to have to do? Put in a separate switchboard to handle a plethora of phone calls from who knows what? And then garbage up our historic streets with these signs? Where is the design review commission on this? These are, this is a historic district, and so I believe that, that either number 1A or 1B is the solution. Share the roads, lower the speed limits, and then use the savings to put in cameras. They do this in Maryland, and it's a major moneymaker for the state and the cities in that, in that, in that state. Why can't we do it? When word gets out that you're caught going, you know, fifteen percent, fifteen miles or twenty miles an hour with the limit, and you get a huge ticket, word will get out, watch your speed, they're serious, because you can't have enough police on hand to catch, catch these people. So let the bicyclists and the cars coexist peacefully. Cars must be respectful of bicycles, and the bicyclists must be respectful of the, of the cars. If you have shared lanes going to bicycle lanes, back to shared lanes, going from a bicycle lane back to a shared lane, how are you going to really see what's coming behind you? You get out into that lane, and you could get clipped, because the car isn't really aware that that bicycle lane is ending, and now you have to go back into a shared lane. Keep it simple, and keep it uniform. Now, as I told you once before, having, you know, buttonholed a lot of people from Greenville, and said, you know, I understand, you have a wonderful city, and you have bike lanes. And I said, well, we were lucky, because the Milken family provided most of the land for the, because they've got thirty-five hundred acres, and they donated most of the land for the ones on the, on the major roads. And I, and when I said, well, you know, Aiken is talking about putting in bike lanes, everybody, independent of one another, said, what, are they crazy down there? That beautiful, unique town with those historic roads and streets, and they're going to convolute and, and do all this crazy stuff to those beautiful historic streets? So keep the historic roads and streets in the historic district, not in the horse district, because that's a whole other kettle of fish. I mean, you have bicyclists going through there, and, you know, you're going to have horrible, horrible accidents. But use the shared, use the shared lanes. I mean, I was going down South Boundary, and I went twenty-five miles an hour, and I said, you know what, instead of being thirty-five miles an hour, this street could easily be twenty-five miles an hour. You don't have to be ripping down at thirty-five or forty miles an hour. And also, there are people that cross over. You know, because I'm looking at whatever decision is made on Hain will become the boilerplate and the template for other streets in the town. This is a really serious decision. And it's like Jeremy Benson said, it's the tyranny of the majority. It's the majority of the people in this room, but it's not the majority of the people in this town, or the people that live in the historic district. And you know what? So sometimes, in the investment world, you invest in something, and the stock goes down a bit, and you say, whoa, what do I do? Sometimes your best bet is to take a small loss and get out there. So take a small loss and take out the lines. Then to go through all this convoluted discussion, and try this, and try that, I mean, I think it's, it's crazy. Keep it simple, keep it safe, and, you know, let's work together on common sense. So my, my thought would be either number 1A or B, and, and definitely go to the shared lanes, and lower the speed limits, and put in cameras, and get the, and get the people, get the people who speed, get their tag numbers, and, and send them the tickets, make some money. And then you're not encumbering public safety, having to play switchboard. You're not putting up these god-awful signs. I mean, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kristen Schauman. I, I am a technical resident of Hain Avenue, since my backyard faces it. And I use it more than, I'll say it again, everyone in this, in this entire room.
Except for me.
I probably use it twice as much as you.
No, you don't.
All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to start off with two things. One, the yard debris. I don't know why that keeps coming up, because on my roll card, I got the same note that says, put your yard debris on your side of the curb. And I know everyone else who lives in the city got that same note. Did you all? When you got your roll card?
Yes.
I think so. I've got a whole, I was showing my children that today. Walked them around town, showing them, hey, look, you see, this is why people put their debris over here. But then I also, today, got to witness, one of the residents on Hain's yard, where he actually, for the first time, put the debris on his side of the curb, after our bike parade yesterday. So he did it. So I sat out there while they were picking it up, caused no harm. The guy was actually very careful, picked the debris up, and I went back and looked, he actually did a great job, did not rip the grass up. It's supposed to be there, and I don't know why that is actually part of this discussion, which it is, it's a major part. And the parking, the other, biggest part about that is, half of Hain has that so-called public parking. But the other half of Hain, are those residents not that special, that y'all were able to move that curb out, and they lost theirs ten years ago? Well, guess wherever you put the curb in. Are they not that special? But the residents on the other end, they have that wide area, their houses are so big, and they have parties, they're that special. I think we need to relook at this, and you guys think about it. Give it a year. Those lines, if they're talking about ugly they look, go out to South Boundary. Those same white lines, they're all the way down to South Boundary, there just doesn't happen to be a shoulder. It's not ugliness, it's something we're going to get used to, just like a first haircut. All right? You just got your haircut, well, some of y'all wouldn't know, but I'm just saying, your first haircut, you look at it, you go, uh, and then you go a couple days later, you go, oh man, it's settled out. That's what I'm saying. Give it a chance, man, let, let these ideas work. I think we proved it the other day, two hundred and fifty-plus bicycles, plus a bunch of pedestrians. I don't want to get run over by my, by some kids riding down the sidewalk while I'm walking my dogs. I know none of y'all do, and I know Catherine doesn't. I think we can compromise, and I know that it's easy. We've proven DOT said it's cool, let's work together. Stop working against each other. That's all I have to say.
Catherine Thomas, 617 Hain Avenue. And first of all, I want to thank all of you. I just don't think anyone has thanked you or appreciated the time and hours that you've spent, you've spent recently looking at this. And I'm sure a lot of people out there appreciate it as well. First of all, I'd like to say, I just have four points I wanted to talk about. You know, there's been a lot of reference to Hain Avenue being the low-hanging fruit, the acorn, and I just want to say, it's a neighborhood. It's, it's been my neighborhood for seventeen years. And they're my neighbors that everyone's talking about. They've been good to me, they've been good to the city. And so anyhow, I just want you all to keep that in mind when we're talking about Hain Avenue. And, you know, I, I don't know, if I didn't live on Hain Avenue, I'm not, I don't know how I would feel about all this, but I do, and that's, you know, it is what it is. And I think there's a lot of issues that we need to keep looking at. Number two, the cones. And let me tell you, I don't think that would work, because people park in front of your street, your house, you don't even know who they are. Yesterday, during the rally, I was on the other side of the street, on Hain Avenue, bikers came down one side, and then somehow, a truck came by, and they were trying to turn into a house across the street from me, and they couldn't turn across the traffic of the bicycles. So he turned around and parked in front of my house during the parade, and crossed over Hain, and went into the house. So I tracked him down, and asked him to move it, and it was gone before y'all came up the other side. But I didn't know that person. Stuff like that happens. I've had cars break down in front of my house, I've had a car with a flat tire broken down in front of my driveway, and you just can't predict that. It's not always visitors. People just park there, and they pull over and park. So I don't think a traffic cone's going to work, because that's not real life. Things happen unexpectedly. Number three. Until today, I was really, I was concerned with parking, because I do live on the street, and I have an investment in the, in the property. But now, this talk about white lines, buffer lines, bike lanes, signs, it's just, I don't want to say that much more about the historic district, because I think that's been addressed already. But I just don't think it's what Aiken wants to portray. When we're looking at tourists, and we have the City of Aiken trolley coming down the street, I just, if there's some way to do it without marking, I would be interested in that. And number four, I would, I really think Hain, what you do on Hain needs to be consistent with what you're going to do on the other streets. If South Boundary's going to be shared road, Park Avenue's going to be shared road, I think Hain Avenue does. I just don't think you need to make the example of Hain, and make us the only street that had parking one day, and then none the next. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
At this juncture, I have a question to ask for a compromise here. Why isn't shared roads acceptable? Just ask, answer that question for me. Since we're looking at shared roads, why is that not an acceptable compromise? Yes, Lex? And I know you're saying about the costs, that it's already like that, but I'm trying to come up with a compromise where it's a win-win, that you have, that you remove the bike symbol markings, leaving the white line, and installing a shared road sign, period.
Share road on the, on the pavement, center of the lane?
Whatever, whatever it takes to win here.
Shared lane is acceptable. There's no question about it.
Okay.
So, because it is, it is a standard, acceptable, risk reduction, risk mitigation approach, no question about it. In the ranking of things, it's not the best one, but it's acceptable.
Can you accept that?
Well, it's, for, for me, as a cyclist, I can accept riding any road out there without anything on it.
Right, because...
But we're trying, what we're trying to appeal to is, is the rider, the, the family who wants to take their eight-year-old out on a bike ride, okay? Typically, they are not going to want to ride on a shared road, although some will.
Well, let me just say...
But for Hain Avenue, I think the only argument there is, what's already there is good, let's, let's leave it. Now, it's your decision, we've had this discussion before, city council has to decide. I clearly would not want you to say, take what's there out, and not replace it, and just go back to where we were. So if you say, if you are really, really locked in to the fact that we, we have, we cannot accept the alternative of temporary closing the bike lane so people can park, then the next best alternative is put share the lane markings on, on Hain Avenue.
Let me just say that where I sit is that I have a mixed constituency base.
Right.
I have some folks who are out for pleasure, family riding. My other base is, I see people walking all the time, and they're riding their bikes, but, but for different reasons. One, they can't afford to purchase a car. They do not have insurance to, for that. So they're on bikes, there's no bike pathway, and they've done it for years. If you don't believe me, just travel Highway 19, and you see them on foot and riding, the bicycle, and Hampton Avenue. So I'm trying to blend the two with the base that I have, and their needs in term, and the gentleman that talked about economic vitality, looking at the economic vitality piece as well, because it's been proven that cities who are bike-friendly, who demonstrate bike-friendliness, manage to attract tourists, it goes on and on and on. We, we know all those things. But I, I, I'm sitting here listening, trying to come up with a compromise, that it's pretty much a win-win in my situ, win-win in my situation, so.
Well, and, and the comp, you know, if, if the compromise that Bike Pet Advisory Committee put out there, which is to simplify the, the ability to get a, a lane, a bike lane closed, if you determine, if you decide that that's not acceptable, then clearly, the next, the next alternative is share the lane, there's no question about it.
So two B...
But that's why I went through, the analysis I went through, on the fact that we, we would be reverting to a, to a strategy that puts risk back on a table. Is that risk unacceptable? No, because, you know, share a lane is an accepted use. It's just that it's, it's going back to a higher-risk situation, and having, having to spend money to get there, which is kind of opposite of where you want to go.
Would two B be an acceptable compromise? I know you were talking about 2C wouldn't, because it would put them more at risk, more liability.
Well, it, it won't fit the, it won't fit the footprint of the road, and, and quite frankly, it, it, it creates a very disjointed, very disjointed, you know, going share the lane, to a, to a bike lane, back to some quasi-bike lane, back to share the lane. I mean, you know, I agree with the comments made earlier, but I'll keep it simple.
Well, so, let me run something around here. Tom, yeah, first off, I attended the rally yesterday, and very impressed with the, with the organization, the people that showed up. I'm also a former cyclist, as you've heard me say. There was a time, it's been many years ago, there was a time when I would ride in excess of a hundred miles a week, and it's, it's very dangerous. When, when you get out, especially outside of the city, and speed limits go to forty-five or fifty-five miles an hour, it is dangerous, and some motorists see a cyclist as, as their enemy, and they do want to buzz you and threaten you. But, so, so I, you know, I support the improved safety, and I support the... But, so, so I, you know, I support the improved safety, and I support the, the idea behind all of this. But what I, I hear from one side is that, you know, we have essentially, at their expense, provided a privilege, or maybe a safer route for cyclists, but we've taken away, either taken away something from them, that is their parking, or maybe more, more accurately, you could say, we've transferred the responsibility and the liability to the, to those residents, because they suddenly, if they don't properly mark, or make an unexpected guest mark their property with a, their, their car with a sign, you know, we've transferred the responsibility and the liability to them. But it seems to me that we can, under one of the suggestions that Paige has made, that we can, without taking anything up, without widening the lane, moving, you know, increasing the level of risk, moving closer to the vehicles, that we can have the stripe that we've got now, that will allow cars, I'm sorry, allow bicycles to remain in that same space that they are designated to travel right now, but at the same time, allow cars to park on the curb. And that's, I hate to, us to keep throwing these numbers and letters out, but that's option two A. Call it a wide shoulder, and you even suggested, as you were talking about your risk analysis, that that was one of the solutions within the matrix. And that gives you all of the things that everybody in this room has said they want. You've got the parking, you don't transfer, actually, you've removed a lot of the liability issues from the table, from both sides of the equation. You have a designated area that cyclists should remain in, but should a cyclist have to leave that area due to a parked car, or inappropriately-placed yard debris, or anything else?
Let me ask a question. You say designated area, you, you said part of that option is taking the bike markings out, right?
Well, it, you leave the stripe, but it does take out the, the bike emblem.
Okay, so if you, if you take the bike emblems out, now you don't have a designated, dedicated spot for cyclists. If cars park in there now, the cyclists are forced to ride down, they ride down that, if they choose to ride down, now they have to weave out-
Well, they have to do that if you put the cones or signs up, too.
No, no, no. When, when you put the signs closing the lane, it is closed. They're not gonna ride that lane. If they, if they choose to ride that path, they're riding outside the lane.
If you, if you temporarily close any portion of that lane, and the cyclist wants to continue in the same direction he's going on Hayne, he's gonna have to leave the lane.
Correct.
Okay. So all I'm saying is, is by doing this scenario, the same car can park in the same place, you don't transfer the liability or the responsibility to that car driver, or the resident, or the business there. The cyclist still can choose whether to turn around and go back, I think is an unlikely choice, but he can choose whether to go, turn around and go back, or he leaves the lane, just like he would in the scenario that you've talked about.
But essentially, what you're doing, you're defaulting to the case that says we have no bike lanes or no share the lane.
No, 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 no. Not in, not in the slightest.
Yeah, because you don't hit, you've, once you've taken those bike symbols out, you've taken out the dedicated bike lane. You've taken out the dedicated zone for the cyclists. So you've put the cyclists back in the same category of just riding the road. A better alternative is just put the share the lane markings down in the center of the travel lane. I would opt for share the lanes in the center of the travel lane versus the option you've just described. It's safer.
But you, 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 the reason I, what this is, 'cause you listed this as one of the options within that matrix.
No, I said two B and, and-
Now, you said a wide shoulder. You did say that.
No, no, I said that two C leaves the white line in and calls it a wide shoulder. That's in case two C.
I don't know if you remember exactly what I'm referring to, but I'll, I'll, I'll accept what you're saying.
Look, without arguing that point, that the, the scenario you described, the case you described, is not safe. A safer case is, just put the share the lane markings down in the middle of the lane. That is, that is a lot-
One last question, so we can move on here. Will this allow the residents to park without putting, not, the guests, to park without putting those cones out?
If they, if we use the share the lane?
Share the lane, okay.
Yes.
Enough said.
Yes.
Thank you.
What percentage, when all this is said and done, what percentage are going to be, according to your plan, bike lanes and share the road lanes?
I don't have that percentage. Again, as we, if we looked at our next ten priorities, what we've agreed, when we came in here saying, let's go after the funding, we were gonna have to sit with the city, and whoever you designate, or meet with you directly, to, to lay out the strategy. Right now, we have, in that, in that next set of strategies, it's probably fifty-fifty, share the lane versus bike lanes, with the caveat that if we determine we can't fit the bike lane in because it negatively impacts parking, or would negatively impact the, the footprint of the road, we don't wanna have to start changing gutter lines, then we would default back to share the lane. But as of now, we would try to get bike lanes in a, probably about half the cases, and then in the other half, share the lane.
Mr. Mayor, to move on with the decision here, do you mind if I ask Jane Vaters, who, who is impacted by this, to a question in the audience, please?
No, no, we want anyone to speak that wants to. Jane, you wanna come up? Yeah? I wanna go back to what Lesley was talking about. Lesley?
Yes, sir.
Just a few minutes ago, and you were talking with Tom-
Yes, two B.
About putting, in the bike, in the bike lane, putting the-
Item two-
Share?
Removing the bike symbol markings only, leaving the white lines, and B, installing the share the road sign. Jane, my question to you is, I'm sorry, get your name and your address, please.
I'm Jane Vaters, and I live at seven-oh-seven Hayne.
Jane, my question to you is, based on your discussion, you've lived there for a while, the discussion is taking place, is this a compromise?
What? Which one?
Two B.
See, we didn't have enough copies, by the way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two, I think she's talking about two B, right?
Yes. Two, two A, now, item two, remove the bike symbol markings only, and then installing the share the road.
All right, can I make, let me, I, I can answer that-
Okay.
In a way, in a direct way, I believe, but I have another comment to make. That worries me for the same reason Mr. Lex is talking about. I think that's very confusing, when you've got that white line there and space on the right. I, I still don't think that people would feel, first of all, I don't think it would be safe, they won't, I wouldn't think they'd know it was a bike lane, but I don't know if they'd feel comfortable parking there, either.
But there, there's a sign that says share.
There's a sign that says share where?
Share the road.
On the side of the road.
Share the road.
Side of the road.
Right.
It's in the bike lane, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
The bike lane says share the road.
I think leaving, I think honestly, listen, I, I think leaving a solid line is very confusing. I can live with that compromise, but I think that's a very confusing situation for both bikers and drivers. I, I'm, I'm apologizing to City Council, 'cause you've heard everything I've had to say before.
Right.
But I just had to speak, and I'm, I'm sorry if I'm taking a long time, but I've heard so many comments tonight that really don't reflect anything that I've heard on my street, from folks that live there. I don't think I've ever been sadder, honestly, since we moved there. We, we had a vision, you know, I'm, I'm gonna use some of the words that, that Mr. Lex has talked about. One is a vision. When we moved there in nineteen-seventy-four, listen, we didn't move on Hayne, 'cause we had so much money. We moved there 'cause we didn't. That was a very tenuous neighborhood at the time. Zoning was very flexible, we didn't know, but we loved old houses. And we also had lived in cities which had no neighborhoods surrounding downtowns, and we lived in cities with neighborhoods surrounding downtowns. And the cities that were viable and successful, another thing that makes cities viable, besides bike lanes, are neighborhoods surrounding downtown. And downtown businesses not filtering out into neighborhoods, but having a central area that's designated, and then the surrounding neighborhoods support them. And even though we have a big, old, wide, busy street, which is not my favorite thing either, it's been a neighborhood for all these years. I don't have big parties, but I have kids. I mean, I have lots of bedrooms, and thank goodness, I'm still speaking to all my kids, and they like me, and they come home with their kids, and they stay at our house. And I mean, so every, when they pull up, when they go out, cones would be a real confusing thing. The other thing, I was just in a major city this weekend, and they were using cones for the opposite effect, not for the, for the special events cones. In fact, it was a bike event that was raising money for cancer, and cones were used to cut off three lanes so the bikers could ride, temporarily, to make money for that event. And I noticed yesterday, and I was really relieved, to see the street cut off of traffic, because I lived there, and that traffic is fast on that street, and it frightened me, and you can take this cynically or not, but it's not cynical. It frightened me to think of families going down that street, in that, with kids, in those lanes, with several people, and not have the street, I mean, and have the usual traffic whizzing by, which we do. And, and so, you used cones to close off the street. And one reason it was a pleasant ride, frankly, was because the street was closed. And I don't have any problem with that, and we don't have any problem with that, but not all, not twenty-four-seven. I mean, that's the hardship, frankly. And, and I think that, but anyway, our vision was to keep a neighborhood viable that would be close to downtown, and I think our neighborhood has pretty much succeeded, in that we're in all different shades, stages of repair, but everything's lived in, which is a good thing. He talked about connectivity. I, I can't see how point six, well, it's less than point sixty miles, because that includes the part without lines. I don't see how that could destroy a bike-friendly community if we talk to each other. Frankly, I have to tell you that years ago, when the money came out of the one percent sales tax, I was distressed to hear you discount bike paths right now. Because what we were thinking, a lot of us then, was that the city owned property already, and the county owned property, and there might be bike paths. And I happened to get a triple-A magazine this week from triple-A, obviously. And there's some, two photographs of Greenville biking, and they're both on non-lined paths that were created for biking, and for safety, and for pleasure. That's what these are pictures of. Now, I'm sure there are places where there are lines, too, but I'm just saying, the ideal spots they show are not those. He also talked about national best practices, and I'm not beginning to have the knowledge you do on that subject. But part of best practices, as I understand it, for bike lanes that eliminate parking, is to have few intersections and few curb cuts. And Hayne Avenue does not, does not fit that standard, not at all. We have fifty-something intersections and curb cuts, and even now, the lane starts and stops, and has to start and stop because of it. So I don't know that we're already following the best practices, which I also think talk about not having bike lanes on steep-inclined roads. And I don't know how that works. I don't know what incline is considered safe, and what incline is not considered safe, but I find it puzzling, when there's been a hundred-thousand-dollar study that says it's gonna cost this much to do widening, and this much to do signing, and all that, that we don't know how wide the roads are, though if we have to widen them or not, yet. I mean, the study wasn't free, and it wasn't done by amateurs. It was done by a professional group, and what, couldn't we measure, and couldn't we talk together? And I really, I'm distressed to see money go for signs and lines that could go for lanes that we could all use that would be perfectly safe. And, and if we spend all the money on lines and signs and that sort of thing, it's not gonna ever get to the point where we can have some of these other things. So I just don't want all of you to think that we're just evil old people, and I've heard perfectly-nice people say, oh, well, you'll be dead in ten years. Thank you. And I, I know that, but the point is, it doesn't have to be like this. It, it needs to be a, it needs to be friendly, and, and we're not being unfriendly. We've never suggested not sharing anything. I don't know. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane.
Yes, I think he's- Yes. Come on, come on up. Come on up.
David Stinson, I live at five-sixty Newberry Street, southwest in the historic district. And I think Jane nailed it with the idea that this doesn't need to be quite so acrimonious sometimes, and people like Jane that I admire greatly, I think are wrong on this issue. And the city made a great leap forward putting in the bike path. What a great thing. What a marvelous thing. And it's not gonna bring the economy to a halt, it's not gonna stop life as we know it. I ride my bike to work, oh, it's about eight blocks or so, maybe twice a month. I try to ride my bike most of the time when I go to the gym, it doesn't always work out that way, but I try to use it, a lot. And it's dangerous out there. I mean, it is not safe, and I try to ride on roads that have either lower traffic or greater space in the lane layout. But I'm always amazed at the recklessness of drivers. And tonight's agenda says bike path, but the real issue here is public safety from City Council. And we've seen citizens injured, killed in bike paths, and I have to say, in due respect to the people of the opposite viewpoint, I have never heard of someone being injured by having to walk a block, either to a party, or to the dentist's office, whatever. You can walk that block, just 'cause the lane is there. Park around the corner. I think a lot of us would use bikes more often for simple things like taking congestion off the street, ride to work, ride to the gym, except it is awkward at times, and sometimes feels very dangerous. I think the city's job is not to enforce a mythical right to free parking. There is no such thing. I think they do have an obligation to make sure things are safer all the time. This bike lane is a great step forward for the city. It's gonna make some people upset, it's gonna mean somebody has to walk a block to a party, but it's a great thing. It looks good for us, and it'll be a wonderful anchor to a bigger system. However, we compromise the next sections, share the lane, whatever, I'm not an expert in that. All I know is, we haven't done enough. We've finally done one little thing, and I'm hearing people saying the sky is falling. It's just a bike lane. One last thing, and I'm not trying to be snide about this, but if somebody can't afford the driveway, garage, parking, whatever, for their project, for their extra car, for their party, it is not the city's obligation to make sure they have that space. The city's obligation is to make the roads safe, and bicycles are part of that traffic. I want you to really keep that in mind. And one last thing, I, I, on my street, and it's a peculiar little street, and why peculiar people live there, but there is a lane for horses, and sometimes we'll have workmen parking it, or somebody's guest parking it, and people call each other and find out, you know, who idiot parked there. They call, nobody calls the police, it doesn't come, we don't put up signs, we don't have to do stuff. You just call somebody and say, hey, you know, don't let them park there, or they know not to park there during the daylight when the horse is gone. But that's Aiken. We have a healthy environment, like having a horse lane in some of the areas. We're gonna have bike lanes. It's a good thing. It's modern, it's wonderful, it's clean, it's healthy, and I really want you all to make safety a priority. Thank you.
Laura Callahan, I'm one of the residents on Hayne, and I'm not a, I don't really partake in Facebook and all the internet, social media. So I was really, really surprised and very saddened today to get a phone call from one of our neighbors, Priscilla Ling Moors. She's at two-fifty-five Pendleton. And she sent me a copy of the internet petition, and I'll pass it around to you. The internet petition, who I believe is the same petition this gal was referring to, has names on it, and she said five hundred names. Those names on that petition are all over the country. So we have five hundred people all over the country that say we should have lanes, and a lot of those people don't know Aiken. So I was very disappointed to hear that four homeowners, of which maybe she was referring to me as one, being disgruntled. I mean, we're talking about character assassination, my god. We moved down here two and a half years ago in a kind of a semi-retirement state, and I just wanted, we came from New York, we wanted an easier life. We just didn't wanna have to face something that we're fighting dirty over something we all agree on. I think that we all agree that shared lanes, or some form of shared lanes, are appropriate in this town, and I think that the speed limits have to be reduced, as Leslie said. I think there's all kinds of things that we can do to improve Aiken. I also think that we have to be mindful that it's a historical town, and that what we do here impacts how people feel about us. And I do think that people should feel comfortable riding their bikes here. But being a member of Hayne and the neighborhood that we share, we can't just give up our parking, and it's not for selfish reasons. I have news for you. When they have the lobster race, when they have- I mean, we, we do use Hayne. There are people, like somebody else said, parking on Hayne. They park, they pull over on Hayne to text, thank God. They pull over on Hayne to make phone calls, to use their cell phones, to go on their internet. I've seen them, thank God. And that could be anywhere from five minutes to a half an hour. There's traveling salesmen, I think, before they get on Richland, they use our street. That's another thing. This was a lovely letter in, in response to that, um, that petition. This is a lovely letter that, um, Priscilla, our neighbor, asked me to pass out, that she had already sent to somebody. Somebody received it. And how deeply saddened she was by the petition that went out. And it was, you know, it's dirty fighting, it's dirty street fighting, and I really don't want to be that person. And I don't think we, any of us want to be that person. And then, this is the, this is very sad. This is Betty Ryberg's comment on the internet that if we take up the bike lanes on Hayne, we will be in national news.
Well, let, let me just, as long as you're calling my name, I just have to say this. I got a call from a national news reporter. That's it. That's the only reason I put...
Okay, well, it's just the right. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. I don't want to fight, I don't want to fight dirty though. I don't want to fight dirty. I want to remind them of Aiken.
I just want to say that I had gotten called, and I actually, I think I, I talked to Dick Dewar. I think I talked to Dick, and said, "I got, I got concerned," and I think I called through Hayne, because I had gotten called from an attorney's friend who said that taking up bike lanes is dangerous. So I posted that.
Very. You have your own...
I just didn't want to name here, I said, "The neighborhood."
Okay, who is next? Who wants to be next?
If you want to come up and speak, why don't you line up up here?
My name's Monique Raven, and I live on Gray Circle. Um, I live downtown, and I have not been involved in this issue very long, so I kind of have a fresh perspective, I think, of this, and I've heard both sides. And what I see is, and I think we've all mentioned, that being bike-friendly is economically advantageous to a community. And we like to bike, we like to casually bike, we like to bike to shop downtown and to go to restaurants. And there's, that line on the street, it, it's a symbol, and it shows that we're bike-friendly. It's similar to what we've seen in Greenville, which is a big success. And it's just a symbol. It's, it's not really that practical, because you go from a bike lane to a shared lane. And if we want to talk about safety, let's not allow parking at all. Take the line, if you, if the line is out of character with our historic nature, then so are cars on the street. So... If, if we want to talk about safety, and, and you don't want the line, take the line up and don't allow parking at all. But I think the line and the bicycle symbol is a symbol that we are friendly. And it might be the first step, and it's encouraging to me. I'm not going to use that lane, but I like it. I think it brings an awareness of bicycle safety to anybody who, who rides that. So they're not only going to think about that on that street, but on other streets that they travel on. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to. My name is Jeff Pratt. Uh, I'm a letter carrier. And I believe, uh, you have the, what you said about riding a bicycle is very scary around the city. I have a great 10-speed, and I never even ride it. I'd love to ride it, uh, but you're taking your life in your hands riding anywhere. Most of the roads around the city, and I'm a letter carrier, should be widened. I don't know how we can get the money. That's a, it's sad to say, you know? Maybe we should tax, uh, tax the bicycle riders. If you've got a bike, you know, tax us a little more. I want to ride it, so I should be taxed for it. Um, this whole thing about we should be sharing the road, that's all there is to it. We don't need to fight anymore about what else we can do. We can't do anything more. I mean, the, the lines are down, I don't think we should take them up. It's going to be a waste of money. Uh, and it does show that we are, you know, bicycle-friendly. I think this city is a bicycle-friendly place. It's a beautiful city to go riding, riding a horse, too, or whatever. You know, but, uh, the roads are way too, you know, you go down Doherty, and I'm a letter carrier, and I have to stop at these boxes, I'm, uh, taking my life in my hands. These, these car drivers go around you like, you know, nothing. It's pretty scary. Um, anywhere. Whiskey Road, widen. Uh, Silverbluff, widen. Because every, every road around here needs to be widened. I mean, we got a big influx of people coming down from New York, wherever. I'm from Wisconsin. And, uh, I love it down here. I love this city, too. But I'd like to see it, uh, keep growing the way it is.
By, by the way, Silverbluff is being widened, if you're talking about out.
They'll mail on it, that's scary.
Anyone else? Okay, it's back to city council for consideration. I, I would like to say, I haven't said much, and, but I, I would just like to say that I, I do feel that safety is the number-one thing. However, our people are the number-one thing as well, as citizens. And it bothers me to know that we've had, again, a number of people that all have lived on Hayne for a long time, longest time. And they could park on the road. And I'm sure, and I know they have at times, certainly. And, uh, by doing this, they have to go, they would have to go through all these ramifications to be able to park and have a, and, and get public safety involved. And on top of the whole thing is, it's not clear to me that, that, uh, we don't have to follow the state law. And, uh, we, we've heard a lot of things from what, you know, other people do, and all these cones and what have you. But it seems to me that if somebody is hurt because we've done that, it's going to come back on the city, probably. And, uh, we don't want that to happen, because we've heard of some, some situations where there've been million-dollar problems, you know, that'll come back on the cities. I can't tell you which ones, I've just heard that. So it, it really concerns me that we would have to have that bike lane and not the share of the road. On both ends of that, that small Hayne Avenue, we've got share of the road. As it's already been mentioned, I think, uh, I don't know who mentioned it, but as you, as you go into town, that's all going to be shared, all the way up, well, for the longest, longest way. And going down the hill to Richland, you know, it's, it's, uh, share of the road. So to me, it's, it's, it's just a natural thing to share the whole thing, share the road the whole way, and not have to go in, and this has been said, too, but not have to go into making all these calls and cones and what have you. And again, if something happens, are we going to be held responsible for it? The city? And, uh, so, uh, I'll leave it at that unless we have, uh, until we have a motion and a second for if someone wants to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion. Whether it's acceptable by council, I don't know. I, we've heard many discussions, and I, and as I said, I personally have pondered this in terms of how we can come with, uh, come up with a solution that we feel that both parties can, uh, can live with. And, uh, the motion is to, uh, it's accept, it's to the acceptance of item two, remove the bike symbol markings, only leaving the white line, and installing the share the road signs and road markings.
Okay.
And I, I agree, because it eliminates them having to go through all of the, um, contacting public safety and every time they need to, um, have some parking in front of their home. 2B is probably the best compromise I can see out of the four.
And it would also allow parking there as well. Now, I, I know that we've, we've heard that there could be some liability issues, but, um, we would ask Page and our attorney to research that to make sure that we're in compliance there with who's liable in the event there's a bike and there's some parking going on.
Okay.
Now, there's a, I might comment, there's an asterisk...
You have your comment. Ms. Dick said she agrees. Was that a second?
That's a second.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion, there's also an asterisk after that particular item, and, uh, on the next page, it says, "SCDOT Traffic Engineer Raised Some Concerns About Confusion This Solution Could Create For Bicyclists About Where They Are Required To Ride On The Wide Four-Foot Shoulder Or On The Road With The Traffic." So just, so we get it all into the motion, as part of the motion since the asterisk is after it.
Well, one of the things I've always been, uh, taught a couple of times by some friendly policeman that explained that to me, you cannot cross a solid white line. Now, I don't know how that applies, uh, here in Aiken. But, uh, if we leave the line in place and go with the, uh, you said, uh, 2B?
2B.
Yes, yes, sir.
2B. It's going to be more confusing by having a line which is really not functional. So, you know, if you're going to have share of the road, it's either share of the road, but also how are you going to, you know, account for the line?
It's share of the road, but, you know, the idea is that hopefully people will use enough discretion that they'll try to stay within that line, and they won't have to, they won't be legally required to, because it's share of the road. But you're, I think it's a reasonable expectation to think that cars or the bikes won't get out in the middle of the, when I rode, I didn't get out in the middle of the vehicular traffic, I stayed to the right. That would put you naturally into that space, and, you know, call it, it's called a wide shoulder in this description, but it puts you naturally, and I don't think it matters if there's confusion whether you have to be there or not, because you don't. If it's a share of the road, road, if you want to get out there in the middle of vehicle traffic, you can. Um, but, I mean, it's, it's, it's the one solution that offers all things to everybody.
Well, a, a, and we have an opportunity here to, uh, do some education. This is the beginning, and have folks get accustomed to seeing cyclists on the roadway. And if we need to reduce some speed limits on these roads, we will. We can. So it's an opportunity for us for education.
Yeah.
And, and DOT also said, and the asterisk about that, the traffic engineer felt comfortable with the use of safety cones, but I don't. So I still say 2B is the most acceptable.
So that's going to be 2B or not 2B?
To, 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 wait a minute, just a minute, are we on the same page here?
Yes, sir.
Yes. We're still on the same page.
2B.
2B, 2B.
Okay, 2B.
And the motion would have to include the asterisk also, right, Mr. City Attorney?
No.
Well, it does or doesn't, it's up to the person making the motion.
Just the first one, though, first asterisk.
I mean, the...
Asterisk is...
I see the asterisk is being commented by the attorney that wrote the memo.
Included in these options.
So what, so, let me interpret this for the future. So if we do this, then this particular procedure could be used just about on any road that's in the city of Aiken, whether it be Park, Richland, Hayne, Hampton, any, any road, because it, you put a white line down and the signs down, and...
You wouldn't, though.
I'm just, I'm just assuming that before any other bike lanes or anything else markings could be put on the road, that there's going to be some more discussion by city council.
You wouldn't do it this way in the future.
There will be a different procedure. Yeah, I don't think there is intent to outlaw bike lanes in the city of Aiken. That's certainly not my intent.
Right.
There are places where bike lanes are appropriate and should be. It's just what we're collectively seem to be saying here is not on Hayne Avenue.
Well, the, the question I have is, uh, 2, are, are we talking 2 or 2B? I mean...
2B.
The lead, yeah, but the lead-in is, remove the bike symbol markings only, leaving the white lines.
And...
And install share the road signs and road markings.
I'm still a little bit concerned about, what is the significance of that, uh, white line?
Nothing.
Can I, can I help?
Let's see if, let's see if Tom can help.
Let me address first the thing. For future, where share of the lane is, we would not need, if there's no white line there now, we wouldn't need to put another white line there. You just put share of the lane down the middle of the lane.
That's true.
Okay. In the case of Hayne Avenue, where the white lane, white line is already there, really shouldn't create any confusion for cyclists, because the bike symbol is no longer there, the share of the lane marking is in the middle of the dr, of the traffic lane.
Right.
And that signals that that can be the intended line of travel. Now, cyclists can always make the decision to move further to the right in the traffic lane. The fact that there's that white line coming off the, the gutter line, they're not going to ride in that. I mean, and, and if they do, they, they, you know, they're doing it on their own decision, but it's not a, it's not a legality issue. Uh, there's no, no reason to really take that white line out at that point.
Agreed.
So...
I've got a question for Chief Verenko. What is the, uh, what happens if there is a white line? Uh, I don't want to put you on the spot, but what is the significance of a, but I will. What's the significance of a white line on a public road?
Nothing.
The intended use of a white line is for the vehicular traffic and traffic in the roadway not to cross it, like you would see on a, near the shoulder of the road. Solid lines in general are not meant to be crossed unless you're doing a turning motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Any...
Can you come up, please?
Come, come, if you have something to say...
Bike lane.
Okay, okay, we've, we've got, we've, and let's get back to here. We've got a, a motion in a second. Okay. Any other discussion by anyone? Okay. If not, a show of hands, please, all in favor? Okay. Oppose? Okay, it passes.
And I'll say one I'm opposed. My five years working on the city council, we have the unintended consequences, and as has been discussed, we already have the lines there, so we'll keep it. And that's going to be the discussion on the next road. Well, we've already started that, and we'll continue it.
My second, I was going to make a motion to remove the white line. See, right now, they're already voted on it. Well, no, no, that's fine.
We just voted to remove the bicycle markings and put share of the lane markings on the lane.
I'd like to make a motion, notwithstanding the prior vote.
You can.
For the confusion and what the chief of police had said...
Make the motion.
Yeah.
The white line should be removed, otherwise we're always going to be, do you cross that or don't you cross that? I think it should be somehow clarified.
Make the motion.
I did.
Okay.
Okay, that's a motion. Do we have a second? If I may, I believe council's already voted...
We did.
On 2B.
We don't have, we have...
Wait, wait, wait. Point of order, point of order.
You asking to reconsider that vote?
No, no, no. What we just voted to approve was 2B.
Yes, sir.
And one is to remove the bike lanes, bike markings only, leaving the white lane, and install the share, the road sign, the road markings.
Yep.
And now he wants to make a motion to remove the white line.
He just voted in favor of leaving the white line.
Basically, not amend the motion, but basically...
Not amend it, just a new motion.
Is to, uh, remove the white line.
He just, he just voted in favor of leaving the white line.
Right.
Well, Dick said fine.
Now he's trying to get us to change our...
He held up his hand. It counts. It counts.
I mean, if council wants to reconsider, then we can...
He held up your hand.
Okay.
Let's move on, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Gary, Gary, would you say what you just said?
If, if council, if council wants to reconsider the vote they just had, your rules of order allow that as a matter of process. That motion... That motion, it may only be made before adjournment of the meeting at which the original action was taken, it must be made by a council member who voted on the winning side on the original action, so any of the six could vote for a motion to reconsider. And then, um, it would require a majority of vote, a motion and a second and a majority vote to reconsider.
So we would need to make a motion to reconsider and then the discussion that followed, we would get a sense of whether council is interested in removing the white lines and if so, we would then make a motion to remove the white lines.
Correct.
But make the motion to remove the white lines or remake the motion to include removing the white lines.
The, the motion to reconsider can reconsider the vote the council just took.
But would that be the...
So however the council wants to change, if, if, if that is the majority's desire.
I'm just trying to understand the legal process.
Well, wait, I was on a winning side, so to speak, right?
Yes, sir.
So I can actually make a reconsider, that we reconsider, uh, the portion where it's in mole legs leaving the white line.
Yes, sir.
And to remove it.
Yes, sir.
But you would have to have a majority vote.
You'd have to have a second.
Well, okay, I'll make a motion, any second.
Okay, and what's the purpose for moving the white line?
For confusion and going along with the, uh, public safety, uh...
He needs a second to his motion.
Director, second over there.
Okay, we got a second. Okay, any discussion?
Well, I'd, I'd like to clarify, make sure I understand, uh, from the public safety perspective.
Right.
The issue, is there a problem from a public safety perspective with those white lines being maintained?
We've just been down this road.
Right.
Shouldn't be this hard.
It's not this hard, this is embarrassing.
I know.
The white line that's there would be just like a, on, around the bypass, there's a white line on the shoulder of the road that is not intended to be crossed, you know, except for an emergency, you get out of the roadway, get around something, but the normal traffic would, would not cross the line.
And people cross the line to park in front of their house?
That would be fine.
Oh, that would be fine.
Yes.
You can't use it as a travel lane. You can't use it as a travel lane.
Right.
That's a better way to put it, thank you.
And I, I guess from a cost perspective, leave as it is.
Right.
Right.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
Yeah, in that case, I withdraw an emotion if that's the understanding.
Glad we got it understood.
Okay, well, we've not done a good job understanding what we've done in the past, so...
Sometimes it takes longer.
Yeah, I know.
Let's move on.
Okay, we're ready to move on.
He's withdrawn it, he, he just withdrew it.
Okay. So our mo- uh...
Now, let's move on, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Excuse, excuse me, uh, come, come on, would you come up, please, and ask, Mr. City Attorney?
My concern in leaving the white line in is that you've then set a precedent for how future lanes and things will be set in the town of Aiken.
This is not.
Not necessarily.
This is not.
I do not believe council would be bound by such a decision.
This is not, this is not a precedent.
Yeah.
Why not? It's the fir- it's the first bike lane issue that we've, we've dealt with.
Well, you don't have to.
So you're setting a precedent for, like, when you look at future streets and, and shared lanes versus bike lanes and shared lanes.
There is no significance to the solid white line in relation to bicycles, no significance whatsoever. We are removing the, uh, the symbol in what used to be the bike lane and we're putting the share the lane markers in the middle of the lane per the plan.
So then, why not, you were already talking about spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a consultant, why not spend, I mean, how much money are we talking about to take up the lane, the, the white line?
We're not doing that.
No.
No, but if you were to, which is what was being discussed.
I think if you were to, that's a dead issue.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
That's a dead issue.
Twenty hundred dollars, I mean, and you were gonna drop several hundred thousand dollars on a consultant, I mean, so take up the white line and so that going forward, you've got, you've got the, the blueprint for future shared lane.
We have the, we have that blueprint now, Leslie, it's in the plan. We'll just follow the plan where it comes to shared lane markings.
I consider that as time goes on, people will forget that that's the deal, that they'll all they have to do is put the lane in.
Twenty then put.
I, 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 I don't think so.
All right.
Okay.
Can I just tell you real quick?
Geez.
Um, it really doesn't have anything to do with the bike lane. It has to do with strategic planning and envision for the city. These people in this audience have gotten involved, they've really researched, they've gotten, talked to their neighbors, they got their kids together, they rode through the streets, and I can't find a pic, I mean, a copy of the strategic plan on the website or anywhere else that we can pull out and look at to say, this is the strategic plan for our city. We know we wanna bring young people in, we have a ton of young people in this room. I'm just hoping that when we get a new city manager, no offense, Roger, Tipperary, that we can dust off our strategic plan and build our new visions to move us forward so that we don't get into these discussions and every decision that y'all made looks at that strategic plan and says, that's the best thing for our city and not just one resident versus another, 'cause you can always have that situation.
Yeah.
So...
But, but we'll always have discussions.
Yes, because that's, no, that's what, we can't plan anything. You can't go by the zoning law, you can't go by what's in the or- zoning ordinances, you can't plan your building because you're gonna come here and everybody's gonna go, I like a green roof, I like a red roof. Who's gonna win? All I wanna do is build a building. So, we got to have a plan and stick to it and make decisions based on it.
I agree with that.
Nobody's saying that, that's not correct, but even then, even then, you'll find that there'll be some discussion.
Yeah, oh, discussions are great, but you can have those discussions in big groups and not on the three-minute squat box, too. I mean, that's what's the most frustrating is...
We can certainly try to do better.
Thanks, Katie.
Okay, moving on here. I thank you all, by the way, for your time and being here and everything. I think, it seems to me that we've reached some kind of a compromise here and hopefully, hopefully it'll be satisfactory. Under new business, item one, first reading of an ordinance to amend the concept plan for South Park Shopping Center on Whiskey Road for signage for Ultra-Tan. Mr. Duke, please.
Yes, this went to the Planning Commission, uh, in January and the vote was five to two to deny their request. Uh, I believe that Mr. Tucker is here to talk about this on behalf of Center South.
Okay.
You gonna talk for a second? No, no, I'm not gonna talk for an hour. Bill Tucker, I'm here on behalf of the owner of South Park, Halverson Development, and indirectly the tenant of Ultra-Tan, and, and I thank you very much for tabling that, this matter from the January twenty-sixth meeting. I have a very simple request tonight, I'm asking that you approve this matter on first reading, that we preserve it for, uh, second reading and public hearing in the, the next council meeting and will give us the opportunity to, to, uh, address any concerns that you have. After this marathon, I'm sure that, uh, you're ready for something simple. So my simple request is, please just pass this on a first reading and we'll, uh, be back in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Bill. Do we have a motion and second for approval? Or do you wanna, you need to do something? Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Certainly council could go ahead and do that. Um, it was denied five to two by the Planning Commission, they, they felt that the signage, uh, which has been denied in other locations for the size, uh, that this was the same case here, there was discussion beforehand and they went ahead and did it, um, and that's one of the reasons why the Planning Commission denied it. If you'd like to move this on a second reading so it could have further discussion at the next meeting, uh, council certainly could do so.
My understanding the sign is twice the size.
No.
I just, uh...
Sorry. Tommy, why don't you come on up?
There's, I, I've heard several discussions and I guess I need a comparison of what quotation marks are supposed to be there and what, what is there.
Well, Tommy would have to address the, the specifics of the, of the, what is allowed. Our point was, would be that the architectural rendi- rendering that was developed into the concept plan was merely a rendering and all of a sudden now it's become the gospel. Now, there may be, there are city requirements for that space and it, and it definitely exceeds the space. The part of that problem is it's, it's the configuration of the, of the unit, of the, of the, um, Ultra-Tan unit. It, it's been described to me as a bowling alley, it's narrow in the front and, and very long, it's three thousand square feet. If it were a square, uh, space with more frontage, um, on the front of the, of the facade, then it would, as I understand it from Tommy, then it would be allowed to have larger, uh, letters, not maybe as large as they are.
But it's a ratio type.
It's a ratio situation and, and the, and the letters that are there exceed the ratio and Mr. Mastronardi did go ahead and do it, uh, without permission and then sought forgiveness, which is never a good way to approach anything, but...
What, Bill, what was his explanation for going ahead and doing it without being told?
Well, I understand that there was, Tommy could speak to that as well, but there was, the issue came up and I think Tommy let him go ahead and open his business, he was anxious to open, um, with the understanding then that he would seek the, uh, the amendment of the concept plan. And I'm, I'm simply here on behalf of, of the owner of the shopping center who takes the position that, that they're okay with that.
Well, Bill, maybe Tommy can...
Yeah.
...tell us a little bit more.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, on the concept plan, it showed the square footage for the proposed sign should've been about thirteen point two square feet. And the signage that was installed is thirty-seven point four eight square feet. And because it was larger, significantly larger than what was on the approved concept plan, I wouldn't sign off on it. I called the, uh, construction company, the sign company, and explained the situation. Well, I asked for, told them what it was about and they connected me to, I think her name was Beth, and explained the situation to her. She said she understood and I suggested a sixteen-inch ladder rather than a twenty-seven-inch ladder, um, a- and a little bit of comparison. Party City next door has a three-and-a-half-foot ladder, you may remember that. Roma's Pizza has a twenty-four-inch ladder, they were requesting a twenty-seven-inch ladder. Um, anyway, she understood, I suggested a sixteen-inch ladder, she said that they would resubmit, uh, with a sixteen-inch ladder. That was the last I heard of it till they were getting ready to open and the sign was up there and the building official called me about it, said, you know, do I release this or not? Talked to Mr. Mastronardi.
Mastronardi.
Or, or the owner, and he said that there'd been a mistake, you know, that it was in production and, uh, several reasons and, you know, he needed to open the store 'cause we're ready to open at this time. So we made the agreement that he could come back to council and request, um, a concept plan, it's a change. And if not, he'd take it down within sixteen day, excuse me, sixty days, 'cause I was trying to work with him. Then after that, um, after the Planning Commission meeting, he sent me, well, he sent me a letter agreeing to that. Then after the Planning Commission meeting, I was copied in on an email, I guess, are, are y'all familiar with that?
Yes.
They have.
And so, that was like, well, okay, this was a business decision. So, that's where I'm coming from. Y'all have any more questions for me?
I, I do.
Yes.
I do, I wanna make sure I understand correctly, um, 'cause this is substantially larger than what was shown on the concept plan. Would this sign, as they built it and installed it, would it meet the normal sign ordinance?
Yes.
It would meet the sign ordinance, but it exceeds that which was on the concept plan.
Correct. You can go twenty percent the front face of the building and this is less than twenty percent the per, front face of the building. The, if you look on the permit application, the numbers are wrong because they only measured the sign band at the top where we measured the whole front facade. So when you see the hundred and something square feet for that sign band, that's really not the correct number.
Okay, I'm gonna take your word for that.
Now, Tommy, just clarify again, Mr. Mayor, uh, the con- this sign that is there now is larger than the concept plan?
Yes.
Is that, and, uh, uh, Mr. Tucker, your, your, um, company representative agrees that it's larger than the, what's on the concept plan?
Yes, sir, they acknowledge that, but, uh, they told me that they do not have an issue with what was put up there now, that, that they are not unhappy with that as far as it relates to the other, um, signage that's on.
That's the company that's not unhappy.
That's the landlord, the landlord.
Young developer.
The landlord, yeah.
Thank you.
So this is their mistake, clearly?
This is their mistake?
Yes, it's not the landlord's.
Oh, not, not the landlord's.
Well, who, whoever made the sign and if they were told something else, who did that?
We don't, I mean, the tenant put the letters up and, and they definitely exceed the, the size limit, um...
Yeah, well, somebody changed, if, if I understand it, somebody changed from what you told them, Tommy, to something else, is that correct? They didn't, they didn't get a permit from Tommy before they put the sign up.
Correct, they submitted for the permit for twenty-seven inch ladder. I told them twenty-seven inch ladder would not work.
Yeah.
They manufactured the twenty-seven inch ladder and installed it anyway.
So they didn't follow through with the due submission?
Okay, all right.
Correct, and that would've been probably more the tenant than the actual, um, shopping center owner, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
That's between them and whoever, right? They didn't do what the city asked them to do, is that correct?
Yes.
And, Mr. Mayor.
The concept plan is, 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 was presented by Halverson Development, that's who I represent from Florida that owns the shopping center.
Right. And the cons- if it would be like the concept plan, it would be okay, but it's not like the concept plan.
Well, except the, the, Tom Vincent from Halverson would say to you tonight, if he were here, that that was an architectural rendering that was not, that was not intended to be the gospel as far as, as what the actual signage looked like, so they, they had some flexibility or...
They didn't know who the tenant was gonna be or what's on the sign or anything at time.
Yeah, they had no idea who or what was gonna be in that space.
It's just a drawing.
Thank you.
Yeah. I did, you know, this is one of the inherent problems with using PUD-type development is that, is that there, then there is no particular set of rules, there's not a, a sign ordinance that you go buy or zoning ordinance or anything else. Every project is, got its own set of rules and things like this, like just this drawing where an architect probably rather haphazardly showed a arbitrary sign, not realizing that the city of Aiken was gonna hold a future tenant to that sign size, um, he just put some, some letters, you know, font size sixteen or whatever it was, on that drawing and all of a sudden, we're using it as the sword of Damocles over the tenant's head and, uh...
Well, he understood he needed to get a permit.
Well, yeah, he, he's much to blame on the fact that not only did he understand he needed the permit, but he understood that he got turned down for the, the sign that he put up there. So there's no question he's to blame for that.
Now, if I recall, Party City came in and, Mr. Paradise can correct me, uh, they were looking for a thirty-two and it was a twenty-seven inch or something, and I don't think we approved the larger sign.
Yeah, that's exercise.
Yeah, we made, uh, Party City shrink it a little bit from what they wanted.
Yeah, the two, the P and the C.
Right.
Is that right, Tommy?
Yes, sir, they wanted a larger sign and Mr. Evans, uh, wouldn't sign off on it and I think it was a four-foot versus a three-and-a-half-foot and council went with the three-and-a-half-foot.
Yeah, it was a, it's a P and the C, is what it was, the rest was okay, that's what I thought.
If, if, if I can say this, too, I think one of the questions is, is what up there, is it, does it look appropriate to what council wants for that shopping center?
Well, the challenge for us is, I mean, personally, uh, uh, I, I looked at it, I Well, the challenge for us is, I mean, personally, I looked at it. I didn't see any problem, but I'm not a, I'm not an engineer type of guy. It just looked nice. But, you know, the challenge that we're facing now, can somebody intentionally violate our procedures and come out whole? And that's what we're facing. I mean, we made, Party City spent some money and effort to appeal and they followed the rules. So what should we do with somebody who doesn't follow the rules? And does that set a precedent for anybody else coming in that says they don't worry about the rules because you can always go to council?
No matter what we decide, we're gonna create a double standard because if we allow the sign to remain as it is, then that's created a double standard within that shopping center. Because we've held other people to the, to the concept plan requirement and not them. But if we make them reduce the size of it, then that means it would be smaller than what might be permitted at other tanning salons and other shopping centers that aren't under a PUD using the concept plan. They're going by purely the sign ordinance. So whichever way we go, we're gonna create a double standard in this.
Well, the other thing to consider, I mean, a PUD is designed to make it easy for everybody. I mean, as long as you build according to the standards, we wouldn't even be talking about this. But because the owner didn't like the standards and had the choice of coming to ask for a waiver, which he decided not to, just put the sign up. I mean, it's a tough one. I don't like making these kinds of decisions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose a motion, please, sir.
I think we need to support, we have to look at supporting our staff, too. They do a lot of work on this to keep it.
Absolutely. Okay, we, is there a motion in second for approval for denial?
The motion is to deny approval on the first reading.
Second.
Second, okay. More discussion?
Well, I would simply argue that while I agree with the issue of, he knew the requirement. Tommy pointed out the requirement. He did it anyway in deference to the landlord. I don't know what they might be planning to present two weeks from now, but in deference to the landlord, I'd be willing to pass it at first reading to give it, you know, give them that time to bring us whatever their comments are at second reading. I mean, I still, I hold it in the same regard you do as far as them breaking our, defying our planning department.
Sounds like we'd be postponing it, never was, so.
Well, maybe so. Maybe so.
Okay. We have that second? Leslie, who seconded it?
I seconded.
I seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, show of hands, please. What did I own?
I'll, I'll go with it.
Okay, passes unanimously.
I'll let him know.
Thank you. Okay, item two, first reading of an ordinance to sell property located at the intersection of Pascale Place and Silver Bluff Road to the South Carolina Department of Transportation.
Yes, I can read the ordinance here. It's an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to convey real property to the South Carolina Department of Transportation. Yay, we're finally at the point where they're actually buying property along Silver Bluff. And we own a little piece that they would like to buy. It's a tenth of an acre and they're offering us $12,550 for this. And really, they're gonna be, most of this is a road and they're just gonna reconstruct the road to fit what needs to be done in this particular area. So we're recommending that the city council approve this ordinance to sell property located at the intersection of Pascale Place and Silver Bluff Road to the South Carolina Department of Transportation.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second?
Move approval, Mr. Mayor?
I second.
Any discussion? If not, show of hands, please. All in favor, pass this unanimously.
And just to close, we have probably four or five other pieces of property, but they're just construction easements. So we're gonna go ahead and just sign those. There's no trading of property. They just need to get on that property during the construction phase.
You need a resolution or something for that, or that's typical business.
That's usually just typical business of the city. I just want to, for transparency's sake, let you know.
We agree with you to do it.
Okay, item three, first reading of an ordinance to sell property at 911 Mira Avenue to S and C Properties.
Yes, sir. This is, you discussed this at the last meeting. They're offering $32,000. It allows us to keep the home that is on the property. It'll bring tax dollars at a future date and the fact that we don't have to maintain the property. So we're recommending approval of first reading to sell property at 911 Mira Avenue to S and C Properties.
Okay. Do we have a motion in second?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Second of discussion?
I just have one comment. I'm getting somewhat uncomfortable with this Christie Ave place. I mean, we're spending a lot of money to get ready to do it and we don't have public's approval. So likely, you think, that they're gonna approve it?
We're meeting in, I want to say, next week. They're coming flying down from Chicago to take a look at it and to go over the details we have concerning that property. It's on the 23rd, two weeks from now. We're gonna be meeting with them from Chicago.
I hope it goes well.
Show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass this unanimously. Item four, first reading of an ordinance authorizing quitclaim on three items on Colony Parkway.
I'm gonna read this by its title and then turn it over to Gary. He's been working diligently with an attorney in Charleston on this. So it's an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to quitclaim any right, title, and interest in certain property, real estate located on Colony Parkway. Before Gary just gets started, just, for those that were on council in 2004, we went through this whole process with Colony at South Parkway. The owner of the apartment complex, there's essentially no changes to what council approved, but they did have, within their, there was a reverter rights. So once the apartment complex sold, the city gets the property back. Well, they're gonna sell it, but they want to kind of continue those rights with this new owner. I probably said everything you wanted to say.
Almost.
Almost. The.
Why don't we want to give it to them?
The history that goes back to 2001 or whenever was that the islands that are in the middle of the right-of-way would always be deeded to the city because they're in the right-of-way. And the city wants to make sure that the islands and the landscape medians are properly maintained. As you know, my office is on this road. I ride by it every day. They do a great job of maintaining these islands.
They do.
The current right-of-reverter, and it also has the issue with the sign,
The signs.
which is in essence, an off-premises sign because it's not on the same property location as the apartment complex. Technically, it's an off-premises sign.
But technically, we require a sign to be in the, to be in the boulevard.
We do. We do. Well, they don't have to have a sign there.
I know, but we.
But we want them to have a sign there to, so they'll be able to show where the property is. The, when this originally came to council, the property owner was happy to do whatever deed city council wanted them to do. And it got a little convoluted as we get to this point, 2015, and they decided they want to sell the property to another person. In order for this transaction to occur, they have to come to city council. They have to get approval of, they have to get city council's approval for this transfer. City council has to sign a deed and then the property goes, hopefully, to the new owner. The way they want to word the deed now is so long as the landscape medians are properly maintained as determined by city staff, then there is no, the right-of-reverter does not exist. In the event the staff becomes concerned with how the medians are being maintained, there's a procedure in the new deed which would actually require the city to contact the developer or the owner. You guys aren't doing it. You've got 30 days to fix your mess or we're gonna take it over. And at that point, the reverter would come back to the city and the city would take over the medians. Okay? But if they want to market the property for sale in the future, they don't have to come back to city council to have a vote and that sort of thing. So it makes it easier to transfer title in the future. And, you know, when you buy real estate, you want to make sure it's gonna be marketable in the future. And so that's why they've worded the deed this way. And just to clarify the ordinance, we had a little confusion over the Exhibit A. The Exhibit A that's in your package is the Exhibit A, is the quitclaim deed that was signed years ago. And Ms. Sarah actually sent y'all a replacement Exhibit A. You would actually be approving the unsigned deed and we'll make sure that the Exhibit A is accurate when we get to second reading if that's council's desire.
The issue I have is, is that the standard we're gonna maintain city medians, too? I mean, it's a well landscaped, well-kept area. Typically, it's grindings and we'll have to get maybe Mr. Coakley to help us a little bit. Are we gonna maintain that and then the other people are gonna say, I won't mind to look like that?
Well, there's another, I would expect, if the city had to take over the medians, I would expect the city to maintain them appropriately. However, the city maintains the other medians. I don't disagree. They probably do a better job than the city. But I think the city does a pretty good job on most of our medians, too.
But my point is, are other people's islands, they're gonna come saying, whoa, look what the city's doing now. And I want my middle island to do across the street on entrance to Hitchcock Woods. You know, I start looking at these others and the city maintains them pretty economically.
Well, I mean, the city would be able to maintain, if the city took them over, the city would be able to maintain them in a way that the city believes is appropriate.
And there's difference in installation and maintenance. I mean, the city didn't install all this stuff and so we're not gonna go install it other places, all the extra shrubbery and ornamentals.
But it looks great.
There's another twist that the property, the new property owner actually has to go through. They have to go back before BZA, as you know. When you get a variance from BZA, the variance dies when the property is sold or transferred. And they've already started that process of applying for the variance.
Variance for?
The signage.
Off-premise signage.
Yeah. So they do have to jump through some hoops in order to make this transaction work.
Is this a?
But this is a pretty easy one.
Okay, and I agree. This is a standard median as per standard, and I ask that for a reason because when we approved the one at the Village, on Village Green, that thing was a monster. And we wrote into the ordinance that the company out there would maintain that because it's several acres, you know, on here. And this one looks to be just a few feet. It's about 10 feet wide.
There is really no standard-sized median or entrance median. That's, again, part of that concept plan for a PUD. To, each one fits the particular area.
All right, I'm okay with it.
Okay, we have a motion in second.
Approve. Do we have a?
Yeah, I think you did, don't we?
What?
You have a motion in second?
I don't think so.
No.
I don't think so.
I think so.
I'll second.
Okay, just any more discussion? Show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass this unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, over to the next page, item one, approval to unfreeze employee positions.
This is the last item on the regular agenda. We have a few positions here, a couple of utilities where the individuals were replacing, had to be dismissed. And then we have a, probably the most significant one here is the tourism supervisor, Elizabeth Harm is leaving the city.
Oh, she is.
Oh, she is. She's going to work for a place called SRS. So we'd like to get that one, especially Phil, because council just approved several hundreds of thousands of dollars to be spent there. And she has agreed to come back to help train that individual. She would probably work about 10 hours a week till we get someone up to where they need to be.
Okay, is that yet?
Oh, Elizabeth?
No, I have not.
These are positions for council to.
Move approval, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, do we have a, you got a second?
I second.
Leslie, second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, show of hands, please. All in favor, pass this unanimously. Okay, we need to go to executive session now concerning personal matter. And do we have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor?
I second.
Okay. Okay, can we have a show of hands for everyone? Pass this unanimously. Okay, go into executive session. Okay, council is now back in council chambers. We discussed personnel matter and no voting took place. Do we have a motion in second to come out of executive session?
No move, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Okay. Show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass this unanimously. Thank you. We are adjourned.